Cavosa Excavating is a family-owned and operated company specializing in the installation of Title V septic systems. Cavosa Excavating is one of the largest septic system installers on Cape Cod. Whether it's upgrading your current system or installing a whole new system, Cavosa Excavating can do the job. Cavosa Excavating, 508-563-5530.
Founder Abraham Penn taught a valuable lesson that has been part of a tradition since 1919, when he said, "I'd rather make a friend than make a sale." For more than 90 years, Puritan has been making friends as a unique, family-owned company right here in Cape Cod. At Puritan Cape Cod on 199 Main Street, as well as Chatham, Mashpee, and Hyannis, you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis equipment, and much more. Puritan Cape Cod, (548) 0116, or puritancapecod.com.
Good evening, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting. Tonight is Monday, January the 28th. If you'd all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First up this evening is a presentation from the West Falmouth Playground fundraiser, Jake Barry. Jake, good evening and welcome.
Hi. So I'm going to give you guys an update on the West Falmouth Playground rebuild, and let you guys know what's going on for Phase Two of the project.
Would you like us to put that on?
Um, yeah. So this vault, we installed the swing set and the slide, as well as the foundation, as you can see on the poster right now. We call that Phase One, and also a picnic table up top. And we're looking to start Phase Two pretty soon. Phase One was like a really big step. There's playgrounds being used by a lot of different people right now, like kids have had birthdays at it, just a popular community place right now. And for Phase Two, we're going to install a bench that the West Falmouth Methodist Church donated, the Omni Spinner, and the clubhouse. And that'll be part of Phase Two. Our next event, we want to ask your permission to use the West Falmouth Park on March 23rd from about 8:00 or 9:00, 8 o'clock a.m. until noon, for an event called the Livestock Lottery. And the premise is that we have gated off 24-by-24-foot square, and then it's divided into three square-foot sections, 64 of them, and we're going to sell these for $20 apiece. And so everyone who buys a square will own one square. And then we let a cow, Delilah, which is being donated by Smithfield Farm, into the pen, and whichever square gets deposited in first by Delilah wins $100. We presented to the Rec Committee, and they really liked the idea, and the West Falmouth Village Association, and they liked the idea also. They're just wondering if we could use the field for that event on the 23rd.
We just need you to fill out an application, just so that we can go through the normal protocol and make sure it wasn't already used, but I don't think there's going to be a problem with that.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else tonight?
Um, that's all.
Great, thank you very much. Keep up the good work. We appreciate it. Sandy?
Sandy Cuny, Chairman of the Recreation Committee. I just wanted to know, Jake Barry, this was an idea, and a mission and a goal of his when he came before the Recreation Committee in 2011. And I just want to tell everyone that through Together We Can Incorporated, this young man has raised $17,569 at the end of last year. Phase One was completed at the tune of $13,700. So they have $5,000 left moving towards this Phase Two. And they did come before the Recreation Committee, and of course, we unanimously approved this idea of the cow fundraiser, and upon your request. I come before you. But anyway, we're very proud of him, and I think the town should be very, very happy and proud of him, and sponsor this event if they can, because this is for the town of Falmouth, for its youth, for all to enjoy. So thank you very much.
We appreciate it. Goes to show, though, that parks are no longer inexpensive, as we know. You used to be able to throw a rope up over a tree and put it, make it a swing. No longer is that the case. So thank you very much, Jake. Keep up the good work. Next up is, we're approving an application for a new all-alcoholic commedital license, Just One Bite Restaurants, DBA, Parkside Market, 281 Main Street in Falmouth, to the board. The applicant notified the office this morning that due to his daughter was ill, he neglected to mail the return receipts to the abutters, and we're going to reschedule this for two weeks. So we'll be looking forward to getting this back on the agenda in two weeks. So if that suits the board's fancy, we'll move to approve the minutes of January the 14th, because the next up, we have a new commedital license at a time location of 7:15. So we would scoot down to the minutes, again, of January the 14th. Do I have?
I move approval of the minutes from January 14th, 2012.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Both?
Abstained. I wasn't abstained.
Okay. Four in favor and one abstention. Thank you. Next up would be a, we would move to the summary of actions, and would go down the list of, number one would be a proclamation, we'll hold that. Number two would be a vote to declare 11 Mill Road available for a public utilities easement. Number three, approved payment for Beach Department donation account, $1,566.20. Number four is approved 2013 annual license renewals. Under the annual license renewals, I just want to check to make sure. Just, we'll do a hold on that one only in case I need to do a disclosure. Okay, so we're going to vote number two. Number three, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Both? Ayes have it. Number one is a proclamation, No Guff Week. I'll ask Selectman Putnam to read that, if he may, into the record.
Be happy to. Whereas No Guff Day has been celebrated since 2001 at Falmouth High School, when adjustment counselor Greg Gilbert worked with students to find a proactive way to handle conflicts. They came up with the phrase "No Guff" and worked with graphic arts teacher, Doug Rebezel, to print No Guff t-shirts for students. Shortly after the first celebration, Mr. Rebezel was kiddled in a tragic motorcycle accident. Since then, No Guff has been held in his remembrance, as he empowered students to get involved in creating a positive atmosphere. Whereas, by taking the pledge and making a concerted effort to observe the No Guff mantra, community members work together and support each other in keeping a positive attitude and creating a positive environment. The No Guff pledge, "I will not speak or text anything negative about anyone for an entire day." And whereas, celebrating No Guff can raise awareness, change the environment, and help people feel better about themselves and others by discouraging negative remarks, put-downs, and bullying. And whereas, the town of Falmouth is a No Guff community, celebrations and observations are planned throughout the week, Falmouth citizens are encouraged to come up with creative ways to celebrate the No Guff concept, at home, at school, at work, and during leisure time. Now therefore a week, Kevin Murphy, Brent Putnam, Mary Pat Flynn, David Braga, and Doug Jones, a selectman of the town of Falmouth, by authority vested in us, do hereby call upon citizens of Falmouth to participate in all activities related to the No Guff policy and proclaim, February 4th through 8th, 2013, No Guff Week.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Both? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Usually at the high school, they throw quite an event for No Guff Week. If any of the members of the board can make it, I know we had a speaker last year from the Falmouth Road Race, the race director, who was able to make it, motivational speaker for the kids, and it was well-attended. And it was a great opportunity for the youth in this community to realize how much they need to respect each other, because if you can't respect each other, you can't respect yourself as you move forward. Next up would be approved annual license renewals. We have commedital licenses, wine and malt package store license, and Class II used car licenses. There are no licenses necessary for me to use a disclosure at this time. So do I have a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Both? Ayes have it. Thank you very much. Why don't we go to the Town Manager's Report? Mr. Susso?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Part of my report included some of the items on the agenda which the board will be addressing, so I will move beyond those, Mr. Chairman, and just touch on a couple of predominant items, just to confirm on, this past Friday, January 25th, and Saturday, January 26th, I was pleased to have the opportunity to attend the annual meeting of the Massachusetts Municipal Association of Boston, and that was, you know, as so authorized by the board, and I thank you for that annual opportunity. Also, we are continuing to receive written comments, pardon me, we concluded our receiving written comments on the wind turbine issue at 4:30 p.m. today, that being Monday, January 28th, and that was as per the directive of the board at the public comment meeting which you held last week. We have received a considerable number of comments, and we are, have prepared those in a binder in the selectman's office for a public review, also available for review. I know that many members of the Board of Selectmen have already begun an extensive review of those comments, certainly the ones that came in toward the end of the day today, board members have not had the opportunity to see, and will be doing so in the very near future. As a reminder, the board meets to further discuss this issue at 5:30 p.m. this coming Wednesday, January 30th, here in the selectman's meeting room. And that concludes my primary report. Mr. Chairman, I do have comments on other items on the agenda to be forthcoming. Thank you.
Okay, very well. Individual, we are in a timed scenario, so I'd take individual selectman reports, if anyone would like to make any comments. Doug?
I just wanted to report back on the Selectman Search Committee that I'm a part of, that met last Wednesday evening. We met for about two hours, and are well on our way-
You mean superintendent?
Superintendent Search Committee, excuse me. Superintendent Search Committee. And well on our way to the process. We'll have three more meetings, at which point we will be making recommendations to the school committee, and they'll make the final decision. That's an excellent group of mixture of parents, teachers, administrators, and community members.
Is the process designed to narrow to a certain number, or that hasn't been really-
Our goal is to give them at least three, maybe four or five, that they will then choose among.
Okay, great. Any other individual selectman reports? I know that I had the opportunity, I'm going to let Pat talk first then, because I'm sure that's what she's going to speak about.
Well, yeah, we also attended the Mass Municipal Association meeting in Boston, and the Massachusetts Selectmen's Association also met in the morning. And the, one of the speaker, the speaker was Jay Kaufman, who is the Chair of the Taxation and Revenue Committee in the House. And he spoke a lot about the Governor's proposal, as you all have probably heard, for the budget this coming year, which is a 1% increase in income taxes, and then a, like a 1.5% decrease in the sales tax. So he talked a lot about that, but there are, there's also a supplemental to that budget. And actually included in that supplemental is the Home Rule Petition that many towns on the Cape have filed over the last four or five years, which is the, to be able to have a, what is it called, a tax on the-
Short-term rental.
The short-term rentals, the condos, homes who rent for less than 90 days. And that's going to be incorporated in the bill, apparently, so it will no longer need to have a Home Rule Petition in order to make it pass. It will still be a local option, but it won't, each of the individual towns will have to file their own Home Rule Petition. And there were a lot of really excellent discussions. There was a motivational speaker, whose name is Neil Peterson, and he actually, he's from South Africa, born and raised, and he's considered black. He was born before apartheid. And he talked about how he was able to, as a young person without any means or any income, to be able to become a sailor, which is what he wanted to do, to build a boat and to sail around the world, which he actually did. But it was a very interesting lecture that he gave for a period of about, what, 45 minutes? And he now is a motivational speaker. He lives in, I think, Tennessee, and he married now. And it was pretty fascinating. He did write a book called No Barriers. So if you're interested in reading about a young person at the time who sailed around the world, it would probably make an interesting story. But the Governor spoke also about his bill, and about the budget going forward. There is some increase in local aid, which we haven't seen in a considerably long time. There's also been some increases in Chapter 90, which will be Those Are the Roads, and that will be very helpful to us, to have more money to improve our roads. And I believe there's also an increase in the monies in Chapter 70, which are the schools. So it's on the MMA website, so if you're interested in a lot of what took place at that meeting, you can actually access the website and read through some of those workshops and some of the summaries of the workshops.
And in regard to that, I had an opportunity as well to, for the first time, attend that Mass Municipal Association meeting. It was very enlightening. The workshops were broad. There were so many different workshops, you had to pick and choose, and it was very interesting. Also had an opportunity to speak to peers from other communities, who were able to give you a little bit of insight of how they deal with particular problems moving forward in their communities. One of the particular workshops I went to was a policy on not only speakers, but policies on how folks conduct themselves within town government, but not only that, but within, when they come to the town government to deal with folks in the water department, things of that nature. But it's a two-sided policy of acceptable behavior, how they should be treated, as well as how they treat the folks that they come to request some information and what have you. I'm sure that it's a useful tool to everybody, if everyone knows how to react and keep their cool. It's too bad in this day and age that we have to talk to folks about how they should actually handle themselves in a situation. There's two ways to get from point A to point B, and the civil way is typically the best way to take. And unfortunately, in this community, and as well as statewide, nationally, and internationally, we're finding that less and less often. So it's important that we remember and we respect other folks and their opinions, and have that tolerance as we move forward.
Could I just mention one thing? There was also a selectman from the city of Northampton, and I've forgotten how many people live there, but quite a few people. And they have been listed in many different categories as number one in the state for a lot of different things that they do. And recently, they've embarked on a project of citizen engagement, you know, how to keep the citizens more engaged in their government and in their local activities. And it was just a real overview, it wasn't anything in any depth, but that's also available on the city of Northampton's website. So I thought I might go on there. They're also using that same software program that the city of Boston uses for potholes, you know, where you can take a picture of a pothole and just email it in, and then magically somebody comes and fixes it within a short period of time. Northampton has done things like that as well. So there, people are doing a lot of different things that, and it's good to be able to talk to people, because you can really see, oh, and the other thing they did was a happy survey. We have talked about having a survey to see what citizens think of their community, but now they call it a happy survey. How happy are you with the way your town is run, with the way the services are provided, with how you feel connected to your town? So I'll have to look that up and see whether or not we ought to do a happy survey.
Mr., we're not taking public comments. This is the Board of Selectmen's report, and you are not a member of the Board of Selectmen, so you wouldn't, excuse me, sir, please, let's not do this every time you come to a Board of Selectmen's meeting. That is not a question time. Again, this is a Board of Selectmen report, okay? If you're a member of the board, you'd have that opportunity to make a report. Thank you. We will move then, unless someone else has some comments under the Selectmen's report. Next up would be approved the application for new commedital license, just one, pardon me, approved application for commedital license, Skippy's Home Plate Diner, 70 County Road in North Falmouth. Good evening. Well, I only know you as Skip Rogers, so-
My nickname's Skip. My real name's Roger.
So would you like to introduce yourself to the board and tell us what you plan on doing over there? This is the site of the Old Box Cards Diner?
Old Box Cards Diner. I purchased it from Ronnie Braga, I've been managing it for the last seven months, pretty much seven months. I started working for him back in January, pretty much right now. And we're, it's a breakfast and lunch diner, okay? We serve diner food, fresh fish and chips, all that sort of stuff. And, you know, just try to keep it back to the old style, what it used to be. It's been there for like 46, 47 years, and I'm just trying to keep it as simple as possible, you know, get the local clientele. And, you know, in the summertime, it's, of course, it's, you know, the McGansett people out of North Falmouth, they all come in and stuff like that, because they used to come in there when they were kids. And I came in there when I was a kid. So I'm just trying to just bring it back to the old-style restaurant.
Okay. I'm very familiar with the location of-
Yeah, I think, yeah, you've had a few meals there.
Maybe too many, yeah.
He actually paid my rent one month, but that's a whole nother story. It's a whole nother story, anyway. But no, I mean, and that's what we're trying to do, you know, we're trying, and I umpire baseball games. I've been doing that for 38 years, 39 starting. And I have a lot of connection with the youth in Falmouth, and they all come in, and they all have a good time, you know? And they bring in paraphernalia, hats, pictures, postcards, things like that, and it's a lot, it's a lot of fun, you know? And I think I can bring a lot to the community in North Falmouth, bringing that back to the old-style diner that's there now.
So does anyone have any questions, or do I have a motion?
Moved to approve.
Do I dare say, I was there as a kid, too?
I haven't seen you lately, though.
Oh, I know. I'll have to come back.
Okay, all right. Now I have a commitment right now.
And a little bit of trivia, so wasn't Bob Dylan there?
Bob Dylan was here in 1975. He was filming a movie way back when, and I still have the picture, and I'm having it framed, redesigned, and it's going to be put up in the restaurant, so. Anybody want to come see Bob Dylan? You're more than welcome to.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Ayes have it. Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it, guys.
Next up is a report from the Charter Review Committee. Catherine, how are you? Brad? Oh, okay. Well, I saw you walking up for us. Sure.
Good evening. I'm Brad Stumpke, and Chairman of the Charter Review Committee.
We're waiting for the projector to warm up. It's coming.
After more than 20 interviews and other input, the committee identified 63 items for consideration to improve the charter. We prioritized them, and then whittled down the list to 23 items for further consideration. From these, we arrived at 15 amendments, which were then approved by you people, town meeting, and finally, the state's Attorney General. The amendments will be part of the May 21st town election ballot. However, we felt that there were several valid improvements and concerns that came out of the interviews and discussions, and should be brought to the attention of our town officials. We termed these "over and above," quote-unquote, and as these items that I will address tonight, we broke them into administrative issues and operational issues. we broke them into administrative issues and operational issues. Since the town manager is the chief... Since the town manager is the chief administrative officer of the town, we felt it should be his responsibility for keeping an updated organization chart. There's no reference to an organization chart in the town charter. Labor agreements, budgets, and salaries should be available online, in the annual report, and at the main library. An ombudsman, a contact point in town hall, or a written guide to town hall and town services would improve the reputation of Falmouth being a caring community. The selectmen need to adhere to the mass general laws with respect to selecting the Board of Registars and election officials. The timelines are outlined in our final report. To alleviate the mundane from the selectmen's agenda, they should investigate forming a licensing board. An effort is underway to clarify the distinction between the historical district commission and the historic commission. That effort needs to be completed. There was an effort several years ago to develop a handbook outlining the duties and responsibilities of government bodies, both chairs and individual members. That handbook needs to be dusted off, finished, and made available to all interested parties. And I've talked to Michael Fisher Palmer on that, and he's got... It's about 50 pages, he said, and he's got it in his computer, so if and when the time comes, we can break it out. Trying to navigate the town's website is a challenge at times, especially for senior citizens. In the proposed changes to the charter, we are trying to emphasize the correct terminology for the different governmental bodies and organizations. We need to do the same for our website. As an example, on the town's homepage, there's a major heading, "Departments." When one clicks on the departments, it displays all of town departments and governmental bodies, including the Board of Selectmen. Next, the selectmen should develop a policy for how and when to publicize vacancies and where to display them. Staggering appointments will help with a jam-up at the end of the fiscal year. This will make a smoother transition process. Now that the charter will allow for written reports, annual reports from the various appointed governmental bodies should be staggered. As for the town annual report, it would be helpful if the selectmen gave guidance to the town manager, so the info was presented in a user-friendly format. Communications was a key issue we heard time and time again. Anything you can do to improve it would be welcomed by many. We recommended that the selectmen develop a communications policy which encourages openness and outreach. Lastly, somebody should be tasked with ensuring that public records, such as the budget and capital improvement programs, are available for inspection with the town clerk and at the library for Article 8-10 of our charter. I've been in contact with Kevin Callahan to tape an FCTV show promoting the ballot questions. I'm going to get back with him the 1st of April to work on that. We'll ask the moderator to promote the ballot questions at the April town meeting, and we'll use other venues to publicize the ballot questions, because there's going to be 15 separate ballot questions. Lastly, we will work with you people to ensure the "over and aboves" are given some attention after this meeting. We thank you for taking the time to receive this report. Any questions?
Okay. Any questions from the board? I have, you know, a couple of questions. You have a...
It's PSA.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry. What's PSA?
Public services.
Public services.
Unless you hang out with old guys.
And I kind of addressed it to you a little bit. There's kind of a laundry list there of a bunch of suggestions that you folks have. And my question is, did you not include them in modifications to the charter because...
Well, they aren't really charter issues. They're, you know, a communications policy, a citizens' involvement policy is not really a charter issue. And so it's something that the board could do, but we had a lot of public comment about it. We had a lot of interest in it. There were things that people wanted more of. So if it's something that you can do, this is our report to you about what we heard from the charter. So it doesn't really belong in the charter to say you should have a communications policy. These are things that the Board of Selectmen should be doing outside their charter work.
Okay. All right. I was just wondering whether it was going outside the scope of what you were... And I appreciate if you had some feedback during that process, and that's what you're bringing us, is the feedback. But, you know, this board continues to try to move forward with policies, and that was quite a laundry list. I mean, that would give us a lot of work over a period of time.
I think that people had the opportunity... We asked people to talk to us about their government, and they did. And some of it belongs in the charter, and some of it doesn't. We felt that if they had made the effort to give us the input, and as a committee, Ralph's here and Judy's here, too, if as a committee we felt that they were really important issues, you all should hear about them, too. It's a once-every-seven-year opportunity to do that.
Okay. Well, in my conversations with Mr. Stumpke, I mentioned that we're up against it right now in the form of having meetings to go through this action plan between our town meeting agendas. We have water, wastewater issues. We're going to have some public hearings. So we will get to this. I just don't want you to think that we're going to slough it off here, but we'll get to it in a timely manner.
We fully appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. And some of these things will never get done, probably, but others... We just, as Catherine says, the people really gave us the input, and we owed it to them to give some feedback to you folks. And that's how we decided to do it in this "over and above" fashion.
Okay. Great. Any members of the board have any?
Just Mr. Chairman, there was a reference in there to our handbook.
Yes.
There is a committee handbook, which I have the draft of. And I've called three times in the last year to get this book complete, and it hasn't been done yet. So there is one. I don't know where it is on the agenda of the town manager's office, but it is on there.
That's what we're doing. That report was generated about five years ago. And it's sitting in the closet. And so we felt it should be brought out.
Absolutely.
And you maybe can help us move that one forward.
Okay. I will.
Okay. Great. Anyone else? Anyone else in the committee want to say anything? Well, listen, we appreciate your work. It was no small task. We understand that. And your job is not done until we get all of these passed at the ballot this May, so it's very important.
What you see there, the future activity, we aren't folding up our tent and going home yet.
Great.
We understand, and we're lucky. We had a good committee that worked well together and got a lot done over the course of the year.
Yeah.
That's great. Okay. Anything else? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up would be approved request for a special event, Falmouth Road Race. Now, to the board's information, the original application had requested this would be to approve the event and the road closures that would go with the event. The event, it's all part of the event. But they had originally requested 14,000 runners. They had sent an email to the selectmen's office and wanted to modify that request back to the same number as that they requested last year, which was 12,800 runners. So if you'll make a note that that, in fact, is what the request is, the same as last year. Does anyone want to get up and speak on behalf of the road race? Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm hoping I can do as well as Jake did earlier. Jake was our top high school boy runner this year in last year's race. That kid's got a lot going for him. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow selectmen, Mr. Suso, Ms. Harper. I'm Scott Gelpie, President of the New Balance Falmouth Road Race Board of Directors. I'm here tonight with my fellow board members, Jeff Cutter, our treasurer, Karen Bissonette, Carl Cabosa, Bob Antonucci, Jeff Nickerson, and our director, Dave McGillbury. We are here tonight to ask for permission to hold the 41st New Balance Falmouth Road Race on Sunday, August 11. Like you said, we are asking permission to hold the race at 12,800 registered runners, which is what we've done the past two years. This year, as you know, we've hired Dave McGillbury as our race director. He and his team have done a tremendous job of making a lot of improvements to the race, including those increased planning and communication with police and fire. They redesigned the transportation system for the buses to get to Woods Hole, which ran so much smoother this year. Dave has started an organizing committee. He has regular meetings that you guys are probably on the email list, and everyone's open to those meetings. And anyone can be part of that organizing committee. We also changed the layout of the ball field to make that flow better for the runners. This year's rain didn't help much with all the mud, but additional fencing in Woods Hole to protect some of the properties down there, and most importantly, additional medical stations and personnel to better ensure the safety of all the runners, just to name a few of the things. You might have a few questions. Before that, I really would like to explain a few things about what we feel the Falmouth Road Race does for this town. And first, I want people to know that our board is a complete volunteer board. None of us get paid, and I want people to know that. And our goal is to put on a world-class road race for elite and recreational runners with all the proceeds going back to the town of Falmouth. Secondly, I've categorized how I feel we benefit the town. First, economically, 12,800 people are registered to run. Approximately 10,000 are out-of-town runners. They come to town with their families, and Falmouth is exposed to them. Some come for the day, some for the weekend, some for the week, or even more. Hotels, B&Bs, rentals are certainly hard to come by Road Race Week. And I know some even get higher rates during that week. It's certainly the busiest week of the year in Falmouth. I know Main Street benefits, my business, my wife's business, we both own retail stores, are up about 20% that week over an average summer week. So I know a lot of retail shops benefit. Another way that we benefit the town, we have our numbers for nonprofits program. And what that is, nonprofit organizations sign up with us, they purchase a certain amount of numbers, and then the organizations get people to run on their behalf. These runners fundraise by getting pledges to run the race. In 2012, we had 89 nonprofits. Twenty-one of those were Falmouth nonprofit organizations, and they raised $2.2 million, which was up from $1.8 million the previous year. No, we don't raise those funds, but we create an avenue for these organizations to do that. Thirdly, volunteer groups. We currently have, or this past year, we had 28 volunteer groups that work the race and in return, receive a donation. These groups range anywhere from 10 volunteers to 90 volunteers. Many of these groups are Falmouth high school sports booster teams, the football team, the track team, the field hockey team. Many of them, they come, they help at the start, they help at the finish. And in addition to getting donations, the students can also work volunteer hours, too, that they get credit for. So we help that way. And most importantly, where our board has really worked hard to try and improve, you know, the few years that we've had this, and continue to do so, is that we are committed to impacting this town through our bottom line, where our proceeds go back to organizations in Falmouth. In this past year, we donated over $140,000 back into the community. Examples of this are the fire department. We donated the funds for them to buy the emergency gator vehicle. Falmouth Little League, the funds for a new field. Falmouth softball for uniforms. The after-prom party we will sponsor up. We started a scholarship fund at the high schools, $25,000 in scholarships every year for high school seniors in Falmouth. We've donated to Arts Falmouth, the Falmouth Senior Center, the suicide prevention group, Falmouth Education Foundation, and many, many more. So, and in the coming years, oh, yeah, I also wanted to say, we've also, besides writing checks, we've partnered with organizations like The Chamber, where we put on the first annual jingle jog this year, and all the funds went to help with Holidays by the Sea Weekend. So that was a great event. We're hoping that continues to be. So that was fun. And in coming years, we hope to make even a bigger impact with our race, working with The Chamber. We're currently in discussions with a group that's trying to bring the football field to the high school, that we may be helping with that. We're in constant communication with Jill Irvin Bishop over at the Senior Center. That's a big need in town, and that may be a place where we can help in years to come, too. So we ask for your approval to hold the race again. We realize that this race is an inconvenience to many in town, but by explaining all of the ways that we feel that we help this town, that maybe we can take the sting out of those inconveniences. If I have any questions, I can try to answer them. I also, anything operationally, we have our director, Dave McGillbury, and thank you very much.
I'd just like to say that Dave is the only guy I think I get emails from when he's doing, holding his meetings at 4:00 AM in the morning. He's one of those guys that surely is working at all hours of the day and night. And after talking to folks, I know he didn't just come in. He's up for the day, just getting going. It's a different type of energy level that he brings to the race. I know that last year was a year that, as we went into the road race, there were some folks that thought that we should not go to the 12,800 number. I do know that I made an effort to get in my car after the road race to take a ride around town to see whether, you know, we were able to meet the needs of the folks in the community. I know that it is a burden in some areas to this community. It has some wear and tear in the community. But last year, you know, we had a rainy day, and the heights field got messed up a little bit. By the time I got a chance to go back there, it was not only reseated, it was resawed. So, I mean, the quick turnaround time that has come, you know, at least what I got to see appears to be the fact that you folks are paying attention to the neighbors. I don't know whether we're going to please all the people all the time, but I'm happy to see that you stayed to this number at least, so that we can make sure that if you do grow, that the community is going to be able to handle that. I would like to take an opportunity to suggest that the road race look at a little later date in the season, not outside the season. I'm not naive enough to think that this would be a fall road race. But this race was typically a week later and got moved back. There are four main weeks. Having been a businessman in this community, the summer is short, but the four main weeks are the last two in July and the first two in August. And this race happens to be in one of... and this race happens to be in one of those weeks. So we're trading, in my mind, we're still trading dollars if we're looking at economic impact. So I, many folks have asked me to ask you to look at that, whether it be the weekend before Labor Day, or even at the outset, two weekends before Labor Day. But typically, things slow down, the community can handle things a little easier, probably, because we're not already as full as we normally are. I know that you have races, you know, things projected out in years to come, but if you folks can talk about it, I'd be happy to come and talk about it myself. But I'm just bringing forward something that folks have brought forward to me.
And I've heard those same things, and, you know, and in being in business myself, I, you know, I think selfishly, I think I, you know, it would help to be that first week, that weekend right before Labor Day would, I think it would help that week's starting to die off a bit, so.
Right.
So I can see that, and, you know, we have discussed it, and we can continue to do so.
Okay, if you can keep that on your radar. And there is one thing that is definitely very noticeable. Your group has been very public and very philanthropic in the last year. You know, even we approved a donation to the Falmouth Recreation Committee a week or so ago, $5,000. Those are some things that may have happened in the past, but we never saw those. The $25,000 card, the donations to the $25,000 for scholarships. Those are things if we, you know, I know that Mr. Antonucci mentioned last year, it would be great if next year you would have put down a list of those things and where those, the monies went this past year. Now, I know that, you know, no one's asking you to spend every dollar that you get in because you might want to make an impact in two years on something, but it would be great for the community to know exactly what you're spending your money on. And I know that a lot of those sports teams get a benefit to be able to buy some T-shirts and stuff, you know, when their organization is working. But some of these major donations that you're making, folks need to know that you're making an impact in this community as you're moving forward. I'm going to open up, any other questions from the board? Doug?
I was just wondering, we're receiving permit applications for specific spots. I know that this is just a permit for the road race, but then they're also using the Woods Hole ball field, they're using the Falmouth Heights Field, they're using the Ben Shell. Do we get permits for those in addition?
It's all part of the actual permit, and I'm going to read you the roads that are involved.
Is that, then, was our permit fee of a road race of a certain size was one fee?
Yeah, that's included on, the new permit fee is included.
And then also the uses of all the spots are those also part of the permit fee?
That's included and part of it.
Okay.
Right.
It all adds up to 400?
I guess so. All right. It's a rather lengthy list, do you want me to read all of them into the record about the?
They're in a packet.
Of the road closings?
They're in the packet as well.
No, that's fine.
Okay. We have written comments from the police department, the Falmouth Fire and Rescue, all of which are positive comments in regard to how they work, and they do in fact pay for their details as they move forward. Anything else from the board? Any public comment? Catherine?
Catherine Bumpus, and I was pleased to hear it's 12,800, short of. I have to say, going back and looking at their numbers, I cannot find from their race results any more than 10,900 people actually ever finishing this race. So if the number of registered runners actually showed up, they'd be 20% more than they've ever had, which is a huge increase. Woods Hole brares the brunt of this. We, along with the Heights, people start coming in at a little before 7:00 in the morning, and they're there until it starts. Nobody I know wants to see more runners. We are comfortable with the 10,000 cap, we aren't happy about seeing it go over. I have bar graphs, if anybody wants to see them again, my guess is you're not interested.
We're always interested in what you have to offer, Catherine.
And I will not put them up on the board. But I would encourage you to consider not increasing the number. I mean, the number was increased above, they did it above their permit number two years ago, they were allowed for 10,000, they went over their permitted number two years ago. Last year, they didn't have as many runners as they had permitted. So I don't see any reason to keep it a little lower and keep it a little more under control. I think if you look, they haven't, it's a lot more people than have ever run, so.
Okay. So...
I'd love to see you go back to 10,000.
Okay, thank you.
And I think that there are a number of people who would like to see it go back to 10,000. I have to say, I don't know how it went last year because I left town. I decided it was a good choice just to pick up and go. Dave and McGilvery and Matt Aguilar have been really good about communicating. I was surprised then to see this on the agenda without having heard anything from them on this, and to see the increased number on the application, to have it brought back down without any notice either, you know, was not what was anticipated, but...
Okay, thank you. Yes, Howard?
Howard Grosser, President of the Falmouth Heights Maravista Improvement Association. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to share some of the thoughts of my Heights and Maravista neighbors on a couple of road race-related topics. First, as you know, we are privileged to be one of the host neighborhoods to the race, and we're especially proud to be home to the finish line. Second, there is near unanimous approval of the job that the folks charged with organizing the event did last year and are doing again this year. We're most appreciative of the outreach by the Road Race Committee to the FH MIA. The Road Race Committee has been inclusive of us, receptive to our ideas, thoughts, and comments, and has acknowledged and acted upon a number of our concerns. There is also near unanimous approval of and appreciation for the jobs performed by the multitude of road race volunteers, as well as by a whole host of town departments like Beach Department, DPW, Fire, and Police. One of the only areas in which there is a wide range of opinion amongst our members is that of the number of participants. We did survey our members, and I wanted to briefly represent their opinions to you for your consideration tonight. Some of my neighbors, some of whom self-identify as runners, would prefer that the maximum number be no more than a few thousand. Even well-managed, they are concerned about the impact that double-digit thousands of runners and associated spectators have on the neighborhoods. They've also expressed the sentiment that the current incarnation of the race doesn't feel much like anything of races of years ago. The majority of the neighbors, again, some of whom are runners, prefer that 10,000 be the current maximum. They cite a palpable difference between the impact on the neighborhood and the feel of the race from the early 2000s, and that same impact and feel when the field was increased to 12,800, both in 2011 and 2012. Well, in the minority, I want to make sure to include that there were two survey respondents who saw and felt little difference between 10,000 and 12,800. Not just the neighborhood, Mr. Chairman, but the town itself does have an upper limit with regards to the number of people visiting and the number of vehicles that it can accommodate at any one time. We have concern that if we surpass that limit and hit the tipping point, that an hour or two of inconvenience may turn into 10 or 12 hours of chaos. The 12,800 participants in the 2011 race was for our neighborhood past that tipping point. As was pointed out by Mr. Gelfe, a number of changes were made, and the 12,800 of last year, 2012, was significantly more impact-free, but as you probably remember, last year's crowd was also significantly reduced in number due to the inclement weather. So the, in summation, the FMH, FH MIA, excuse me, will support whatever your decision may be with regards to the size of the 2013 field. We look forward to great weather, another great race, and discussing a year from now the appropriate size of the 2014 field. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, have a question for Mr. Gelfe, I think. If 12,800 were permitted last year, why was it that only 11,475 bibs were handed out?
Well, there's always, there's always an attrition. I mean, you don't get, you register 12,800, not everyone shows up.
But so the 12,800 was actually registered?
Right.
Just didn't show, there were no shows?
Correct. I think we had 10,900 and something that finished the race.
I understand the finishing.
And there's always an attrition. Yeah.
Okay, so there...
You don't get everyone, we have our sign-up in the spring, so people sign up, schedules change, training schedules, if someone gets hurt, a number of reasons.
But there were 12,800 numbers?
Handed out.
Handed out.
Yes. Oh, actually, not necessarily handed out, because some didn't pick them. Yes, 12,800 people paid for their numbers.
Can we discuss a little bit about if, you know, we do the 12,800 runners, that we have some kind of date certain that we would sit down with the two groups, me and the Heights group and the Woods Hole group, after the race? Summertime might not be, because everyone's still trying to enjoy themselves, maybe sometime in October or something of this year, so that folks could sit down before we come to the permitting process to see where we are and how you were able to handle how you did. Specifically, you know, there still seems to be some fear with Howard is, he said maybe last year wasn't, it was much better run with the 12,800, but there was some, still some concern because the weather wasn't great. So maybe if the weather's great this year, we'll be able to see whether or not 12,800 still worked in the Heights, or it didn't work. So rather than us come here on a meeting when you're applying for your permit, we'll know that a lot earlier in the fall as you move forward before your permitting process.
I know Dave is, you know, constantly reaching out to the groups, so that would be no problem.
Well, I know he's got a great lookup calendar, so if we put that on his calendar right now, that we could move forward with that, I think that would be smart to have people like Catherine and both Howard involved in a meeting like that, and I think you'd want a member of the board, whomever that might be under that chairman, to be able to sit down with that group.
What sort of number of applicants were there that did not get registered?
That we turned away? I think we turned away about 5,000 people in the lottery, so...
But Falmouth residents?
No, Falmouth residents, they get the first chance. You're guaranteed, if you're a Falmouth resident, if you register by a certain date, you're in. After that, we have a lottery, everyone else registers, and then, you know, last year, so I think there were 2,500 Falmouth runners, you know, so about 10,000 out of town, or so about 15,000 out-of-town people registered for the race, 10,000 got in.
And you can't guarantee my time will be better this year than it was last year?
Um, if you...
Geez, you're quite the athlete. You did the swim, you do the run, I like it. Go ahead, Brent.
More of a walk this year. I think I'm comfortable with the 12,800 this year, but I would like to remind the race committee and everyone involved that you mentioned returning all proceeds to the town. I think one of the things that you return as well and needs to be kept in mind here is goodwill. And that, you know, it's been raised in years past, the question of how much is too much. And I'm glad to hear that it went more smoothly for the Heights this past year. I think some of the things to be considered are the weekend, that may have an effect. If it's later in the season, it might be easier to manage for the town, it might be less of an impact on the residents. But just things to think of as we go into the next year, because I think we need to settle on something. I think continuously growing the numbers may not be a good idea. There really has to be a cap. Falmouth is only so big, and there's probably only so many people that you can bring to the race. And I hope you folks are considering that as you go through this process, I know I am, so...
No, we absolutely are considering it, but I grew up in Falmouth, Jeff Cutter lives in the Heights, Karen grew up in Falmouth, Carl lives in Falmouth, Bob, Jeff, we're all Falmouth residents. I mean, we want what's best for the town, and we've really turned this around and almost turned it into a fundraiser for the town. So yes, we're trying to balance, how many runners can we do? Because we're looking at it, the more runners we can, the more money we can give away. So that's kind of where we are, you know, and working with you, working with the neighborhood groups. You know, we talk about trying to incrementally go up because more groups will benefit from that, and that's our thought process when we're talking about growing. We're not getting richer, you know, Dave's not getting any more money, so it's really the town that will benefit from it, and organizations in town. So that's our thought, and, you know, and if you say, "That's it, 12,800, you're never going," you know, then that's fine. And, you know, but it's for the town, and, you know, we are the town too, so...
My inclination, if anything, would be to go lower than go higher, so I think any suggestion of incremental increase, I would almost immediately respond saying, "Actually, no, we're going to go back down to 10,000." So that would be my warning, that that really concerns me, that, you know, it isn't all about just getting the money, it is making sure that it is a...
Right, right.
An activity that is actually really sponsored by the communities that have to live through it.
And as a follow-up to that, we have to keep in mind that these folks pay taxes. They don't need you to raise money for their community. If you displace 10, 20, or 400 people from their homes on that weekend because they don't think they can function here in the community they pay taxes in, we've gone the other way. You're not really helping us any longer. You're really kind of turning off the folks who are paying our bills, paying our taxes day in and day out. So it's a fine line we're walking as we move forward. We just have to be aware of that. That's all.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay. Pat?
I just want to mention, we keep talking about 12,800, but in 2010, well, it's the last two years, it was 12,800. In 2011, it was just slightly over 10,000, and in 2012, there were even less who ran. You could say it was 10,003 in 2011, or maybe 10,001 in 2012. I mean, there were fewer runners who actually ran. So although you register 12,800, it's only slightly over 10,000 who actually finished the race. So I think that's something that we need to keep in mind, that if it ever went to 12,800, it probably would make a huge difference. But you always know that every year, there are, there's a percentage of people that just don't show up. So I think monitoring that on an annual basis is a really good idea. Thank you, Catherine, for your statistics, and I'm sure you have them too.
Okay. Anybody else? Catherine, I saw your hand up back there, did you want to speak again?
It may just be a data issue, that numbers that I have are based completely on race results, and the number of bibs issued is just the highest bib number I could find that finished. So I searched for that on their website. So that is how I got their bibs issued number, because that is the information that's publicly available and easy to find for me. So rather than have somebody else chase it down, I just looked it up that way. So that is, I am basing the information on what is publicly available from the Falmouth Road Race.
Okay, thank you. So do I have a motion, or?
Move to approve.
And that would include the associated road closures as well?
Correct.
Okay, so it's a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any last public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both? That's happened, thank you very much, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you all at the starting line.
Yes, I'll be there. But not to run.
Next up is, discuss and vote to approve the Solid Waste IMA inter-ministerial agreement with the town of Borne, and I'm going to let the town manager recap what this particular agreement is and where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board may recall, a little over a month ago, I believe it was December 17th, but at any rate, at your meeting mid-December, we did summarize for the board where we were on the negotiations with the town of Borne on our proposed solid waste contract, and the board affirmed moving forward to come to closure. Since that time, we have been working diligently with... Since that time, we have been working diligently with the Town of Born, and I'm pleased to advise that we brought that to conclusion, including all the elements that the board had affirmed. And to summarize once again, this contract would begin on January 1, 2015, at the same time as the existing solid waste contract with CMass concludes. It is at the rate of $58 a ton, with annual increases tied to the cost of living index, not to exceed 2.5% annually, and understanding that if any lower tonnage rate is granted to any other municipality, that lower rate will be extended to Falmouth as well. It is a 10-year contract with an option for an additional five years. It commits up to 12,000 tons per year in capacity, but it does, it eliminates at the same time the minimum manual tonnage requirement, meaning that there is no penalty for recycling, which is a definite plus for the town, and keeps all the town's options open. It includes all residential and town-generated municipal solid waste, and it also, with a separate understanding, affirms a willingness for a written agreement to continue a working partnership with the existing transfer station involving the Town of Born as well. And again, this evening, we're seeking the Board of Selectmen's approval of this completed intermunicipal agreement with the Town of Born. It has been reviewed and affirmed as to legal form by Town Council Frank Duffy. I do want to thank Frank, I want to thank Public Works Director Ray Jack, Board of Selectmen Chairman Kevin Murphy, all who were very significantly involved in this process, my colleague Heather Harper as well. And I do recommend to the board your favorable consideration and action on this important solid waste agreement that positions the Town of Falmouth well to control our solid waste costs for the coming decade and beyond. Again, the board has been well aware, as has the community, of the significant concerns about the imminent, very, very large increases in solid waste, waste costs facing communities in the Cape, on the Cape, beginning in 2015, and we're thankful to be well ahead of the curve in reacting to that imminent issue regarding cost increases and tempering those cost increases to the benefit of the residents of Falmouth, while maintaining all, all of those services and, in fact, enhancing our ability to recycle at no penalty of the town. So happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, that you or members of the board may have.
Pat?
I have a couple of questions. There is quite a list of unacceptable materials that are in here, and I'm wondering if, and it's probably, they're probably no different from what we don't accept now at our solid waste facility, but, so my question is, for white goods, will people still be able to use that 250 a bag and white goods and other kinds of materials that are accepted at our waste facility? Will they still be able to do that? Or will just, will everything have to go to Born?
We do not anticipate any changes in the manner in which people operate currently. Obviously, there's nearly two years between the present date and when this cutover occurs. It's always possible that with the involvement of the board as well, there may be some adjustments in how decisions are made in terms of solid waste being administered. But this contract does not contemplate any changes, nor does it require any, other than the major fact that we will not be penalized if we fall below minimum tonnage, meaning that we will not be penalized if residents of the town recycle to a considerably greater extent. Our current agreement would penalize the town for larger recycling amounts, and therefore fewer, a lower solid waste tonnage.
Yeah, and then I have two other comments. It would probably be very helpful between now and the implementation date to have a roadshow of some sort in the town, public forums, where people can be brought up to date, because some people may just think, you know, life goes on in the same fashion, but I think it's helpful so that people understand. The other thing is there are penalties if there are, if they find unacceptable items in the trash. And I know Nantucket went to clear bags so that they would be able to inspect the bags as they went in, and I didn't know if that's something that we may want to consider, or as you do some public forums, whether or not that might come up and, and people might see that that would be of more benefit. Because we certainly wouldn't want to have a lot of penalties, because people have put what is considered unacceptable. Those are just-
To the best of my knowledge, there are currently those same penalties, in other words-
Currently?
They're currently those same, this is boilerplate part of a solid waste contract, because those are unaccepted materials in, in any waste stream.
Okay.
That's, that's what at least was explained to me, because I saw some of those as well.
Right.
And again, this is, this is the end use of our solid waste. This has nothing to do with the day-to-day operations as folks see it in this community. We still have curbside. Those things could evolve as we move down the pike, but this was, give us a home for our trash, our solid waste, at the end of the waste stream. So the way that this contract was designed, that we currently have our own transfer station out there in Thomas Landers Road, folks will still be able to pay 250 a bag as long as the town decides to do that. So this has not, no effect on that, it just supplements the contract we have for, currently at CMass, for this contract. I will say that, from what I have heard, over anywhere else in Cape Cod, this is the best dollar rate that anyone else in Cape Cod has received.
They're not happy about it.
Yeah, I know, no one else is really happy about it, but no one else really talked to the Town of Born for quite some time moving forward. And, you know, we, we had the opportunity to speak, and their selectmen encouraged us to do so, and actually, Cavanta tried to buy all the capacity there to kind of force everyone to go to Cavanta. They just happen to have enough capacity to be able to handle the Town of Falmouth, and did have capacity for another couple of towns, but whether or not those towns go that way or not will be up to them. Go ahead, Brent.
Just to clarify for folks, so that they understand that when we're talking about banned materials, and I think this goes to, there may be some concerns about there, about the future of the transfer station, the, the old town dump on Thomas Landers Road. Things like lead batteries, tires, white goods, what else do they have here? Gas cylinders, like propane cylinders, mercury bearing products, all of these things already have to be delivered to, to the dump, the transfer station anyway, because they're not allowed in our waste stream as it is. So as, as noted, it's not going to change the way we do business, and I think it certainly puts more emphasis on the need to, for this board to look at how we manage the, the old dump, the, the transfer station on Thomas Landers Road. I do have one question. It mentions 12,000 tons. Is that a maximum? And if so, what is our average tonnage per year now? So are we limited to 12,000 tons maximum? And if so, then what's our average annual tonnage?
That, great question. That is the amount that has been set aside for us, and I'm advised by Public Works Director Ray Jack, that our total per year is well under 12,000 tons now, and meaning that as the town continues to recycle, our tonnage is likely to continue to drop, as it has been over the last few years, which is why the town's in a position of potentially paying a penalty for not meeting the minimum tonnage set aside many years ago with CMass. Other communities are in the same boat as we are, so we're pleased to be able to remove that minimum tonnage requirement. But we have a, that set aside in particular a year mark, so that if we fail to recycle larger quantities in the future, we still have some capacity. I believe it's an additional 10% to continue to grow, but I'll be happy to get the board those exact numbers, say from the last five years, if that would be helpful.
It would be.
I thi, I think it's important to note as well, that, that our current contract has capacity in the contract and a requirement in that contract, that our commercial haulers go through that same process. In other words, the numbers we're looking at include our commercial haulers. This contract eliminates the commercial haulers, it does not provide an end use for our commercial haulers. So the old contract did in fact encourage that, they wanted that, the commercial waste, as well as the, our own town municipal waste, meaning from the folks up and down the street. So if you looked at the numbers we currently dumping versus these numbers, they're two different numbers, because these numbers are strictly for, for our municipal waste, not, not commercial waste. Okay?
I got-
Sure.
Two things. And I had a friend who was a builder, who was up there six weeks ago, and actually watched them in Born burying roof shingles. I was under the impression no more landfills are actually still burying stuff. And what guarantee do we have that there's not going to be an issue with the DEP with that landfill in a year or two? Is that all guaranteed? I mean, that is a conventional landfill still, and you know what? We just lost South Hadley and Taunton closing, so, you know, my concern is, if we enter an agreement, and two years down the road, the DEP comes down on them for, you know, I want to make sure it's not going to be, you know, what does that leave us? Was there a guarantee?
Certainly. Great question, Selectman Braga. Well, there is, there's no ability to give an absolute guarantee on what may happen in a future unknown, but we do have an understanding with the Town of Born, that would an issue arise regarding their licensing, that they would give us advanced notice of that and the ability to make some adjustments. But I do want to underscore that, even though some landfills are certainly closing, there remain a number that are operating within the Commonwealth, fully licensed by the DEP, including the, the Town of Born. And we go forward with this with a full knowledge that within the mix of solid waste options in the Commonwealth, landfills continue to play an important role in that. And keep in mind, as Selectman Murphy's indicated, that CMass just signed a contract with the Town of Born themselves, and Born handles a, a major amount of the fly ash tonnage now from CMass. So that's a further indication that this mass burn facility at CMass is also in part dependent upon landfilling as a solid waste solution. And I think that what we're seeing occur is that there has been, there's been a little bit of an expansion in terms of the point of view of sanitary landfilling in the entire mix of solid waste solutions, where at one time, I think the, there was a view that the cutting edge and the absolute future of all refuse disposal was mass burn. But I think what's been found over time is that it's presented some air pollution-related challenges, some air scrubbing challenges, and some cost increase related challenges that's resulted in the recognition that landfills continue to play an important role in properly managed, which I think is, is the key. I know I've personally toured the Born facility, and having seen a number of landfills in other states as well during my career, I'm happy to say that I'm impressed with the level of professionalism that I witnessed in terms of the upgrades for the Born landfill, and some, the manner in which they've dealt with some issues that I understand have arisen in, in the past, but have been appropriately dealt with, and that is from the standpoint of the DEP, as well as some of the issues regarding neighbors. So I am confident that if issues arise, they will be dealt with by our colleagues in the Town of Born appropriately, and they will work with us as a partner to be able to adjust to those accordingly. But there is absolutely no ability to have guarantees about what the future will hold. I do feel on balance, it is the most appropriate course, and certainly by far the most cost-effective course for Falmouth taxpayers for the coming 10 to 15 years.
I just want to make note a couple of things in regard to this. The Town of Born's landfill, it's still a dump, no matter what we call it, but it, it is a fully lined facility, unlike what we had here in the Town of Falmouth. So the facility is state-of-the-art, in fact, they, they capture any and all of the, you know, the wastewater, and then they wash that and take it off-site for, in the lining. The other, other scenario is that it might be good for this board at some point in time after we consummate this contract, for us to take a little visit up there and see what a professional operation it in fact is. I can tell you that their, their director there, Mr. Barrett, was actually even one of the speakers at the MMA in some of their workshops. So he's highly thought of in, in the state in regard to solid waste. Okay. Anybody else? Sure, Pat?
Yeah, a question. With this agreement, does, would Born still have considerable additional airspace to sell, do you think? Or do you know? Or does this, would this pretty much close them off for a while?
This limits them, I believe they have enough airspace for the Town of Nash being sandwiched, but they'd have to negotiate that contract with them individually. Whether they decide to go with Born would be up to those two communities. The other main key with this is, so everyone is aware, that Born has, has expressed their desire, and it would be a side agreement, I think, the town manager would be putting together a memorandum of understanding with them, that we would try, work together with them to keep the rail line viable as we move forward in the years to come, so that if in fact, Falmouth needs to be able to transport solid waste, or whether it's recyclables or something of that nature, that that would still be a viable option as we move down the line. Yep.
I think it's worth noting that if something did happen, I'm not sure why has South Hadley or Taunton closed.
Oh, they're at max, that's, it was normal.
So they've maxed out, okay. But certainly, when we talk about regulatory changes and such, and you could run into the same problem with CMass or any other disposal facility. In fact, I was reading something earlier today, that the EPA denied some sort of a power plant in Texas, I think, and there's, there are folks all up in arms about it, and so we're at the whims of, of regulatory actions, one way or the other. It's never easy to predict those.
Right. And if this board remembers, CMass itself closed a couple of years ago for a period of time because they had an explosion, and Born was gracious enough to accept all of the Upper Capes trash at that time, to be able to help us bide, bide the time till we get it back and running. So I'd look for a motion to enter into the intermunicipal agreement with the Town of Born.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Yep? I wasn't going to go by that without public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matt McNamara. And no small task to negotiate such an important agreement. But if, if I could, I'd like to ask four questions, that I think, based on the meeting that you had in February 17th, that, trying to listen to it, and I think it might be useful for all of us who are following this closely. And just to follow up on something Pat Flynn brought up on the 17th of February, I'm sorry, December, and Pat had asked what plans they were to maintain the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station. I assume in many ways, based on the discussion that you all had, it was based on some of the significant capital investment we've made over the years with that. And, and I wonder if the Board of Selectmen or, you know, Town Manager have had any discussions with the Regional Transfer Station folks themselves, or the other towns that are impacted? I know there were discussions about some possible things that might happen, but nothing has followed up tonight in terms of, hasn't been any real discussion in terms of what might happen with that transfer station. So if I could start with that first question.
What?
I'm happy to comment on that.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, we need to keep in mind that that facility is in a position where it's going to continue to operate through December of 2014. So there is nothing imminent that is threatening the viability of the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station, but nonetheless, our understanding with the Town of Born, and we welcome others to join with us, is to maintain that as a viable operating facility, recognizing that there is a significant public investment there. The, the rail link to which Selectman Murphy referred is critical- The rail link to which Selectman Murphy referred is critical to maintaining future options for the Town of Falmouth and all others. And we intend to take every, every reasonable step to maintain that viability beyond January 1st, 2015. So the kinds of discussions to which you are referring are ones which will be unfolding over the coming several months. But it's critical for this decision, that's before the Board of Selectmen tonight, to be made, in advance of that and for us to not speculate or take speculative action in advance of it. But generally speaking, notifications are out there. There's a general awareness of the direction in which the Town of Falmouth, subject to the board's actions, would be going. And the status quo will be maintained, as I noted, for nearly the next 24 months. And we have opportunity to, to work in the direction to which you're referring, Matt, and quite correctly so, we share, I believe, your, the concerns that I think are reflected in your question and Selectwoman Flynn's back in December, that that maintain, be maintained as a viable option. The fundamental direction that, of course, we're laying here is recognizing that from the standpoint of taxpayers, savings of 15 to $20 a ton minimum, which will be seen beginning in January of 2015 compared to the alternatives that are out there, is a considerable savings that the taxpayers deserve. But we do need to maintain the viability of this other important asset, and we intend to do that and be reporting periodically to the board on the status of that in the months to come.
I might add, Matt, that it's important to make note of what came first, the chicken or the egg in this situation. You can't negotiate the whole process down the line. We've negotiated an end use, whereas every other community, I can tell you, the towns Mashby, Sandwich, and other communities would love the deal that the Town of Falmouth ended up getting with the Town of Borne. I can tell you that it's been told to me that they're not going to get the same deal that the Town of Falmouth got. So what we do with the facility, we'd like to work together with all those member communities. I know that we want to keep it a viable option, but Falmouth's always been the main investor in that community. The employees there are Falmouth employees. They're, they're participants in the Falmouth retirement system. They're, they're, you know, on the Falmouth, they're paid by the Town of Falmouth. So I, I think it's been loud and clear that we want to keep that as an option.
And I agree with the assessment, and I appreciate that. I think in many ways, though, when you look at dollars, which I think in many ways are directing us, to look at the capital investment, and again, we have made the most significant of the capital investment in the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station. To lose that investment, tax on dollars. You may not see it in terms of $58 per ton at the moment, but if you were spread that out in terms of the loss of what that capital investment was, it would add to the cost of the tonnage. So I think it's just something important as we go through. And I was just wondering what, had there been discussions as we look at that? If I could, the second question in many ways follows up on what David Braga and Brent Putnam were just asking in terms of capacity in many ways with Borne. And I know when you're negotiating with somebody else and they want to sell you whatever that might be, it sounds good. But I wonder if we have actually had direct conversations with the DEP in terms of what the DEP sees as the life expectancy of Borne, the longevity of Borne's ability to accept our trash? And if so, could you just inform us what those discussions with DEP might have been?
I'm happy to just comment on that. Generally, I have not had discussions directly with the DEP, but through the Town of Borne regarding the permit process and the ongoing working relationship with DEP, yes, that information has been shared with us. But I did not take it upon myself to question what the Town of Borne had indicated and to question the validity or the accuracy of the permits the DEP has issued. I've let those stand on their own volition. Similar to what we do, for instance, when the DEP issues us a permit for water or wastewater, I think they stand on their own and they have a certain life of their own that I respect because of the issuing authority.
Great. And Mr. Chairman, again, if I could, my third question actually follows up on something you just mentioned in terms of the fire at CMAAS and that we in many ways had to scramble. And Borne was very helpful to us. But I'm, I'm wondering what contingency plan we have and the Town of Falmouth should Borne be closed on either a short-term, temporary basis or even on a long-term basis before the term of the contract expires?
Well, I think the contract itself requires the Town of Borne to handle the waste for a 30-day period and find a home for it in that 30-day period, but notify us about any pending actions that the DEP might be taking, moving down. Those things don't typically come out of nowhere. So I believe that that's what the contract states. I think the town manager already addressed the scenario. This could happen to CMAAS, this could happen to the Town of Borne.
Absolutely. And I was just wondering what the contingency plan is, because the fire actually did come out of nowhere at CMAAS. It wasn't anything that was anticipated. I think the capacity is something more anticipatory than an emergency that might also close us down. And if we were forced to go to another community, again, it could cost significantly more, again, edging up that $58 a ton as you look at the life of a contract because of a particular contingency plan. If we no longer have CMAAS, if we don't have Borne on a short-term or long-term basis, we could be at the whims of whatever disposal sites there might be that might be significantly more costly. So I was just wondering what the contingency, contingency plan was.
Well, just, it just maybe I'll address that. We don't have a contingency plan right now with Covanta. There is, there is no backup. We would have to scramble in that particular scenario as well.
So hopefully we'll learn from the Covanta experience.
We'd have to, you know, negotiate another contract with someone else. I don't think that you can attach it to the one contract.
And could I also interject, Mr. Chairman, and I think, you know, in a further response to Mr. McNamara's question on that, we have to recognize, as was already pointed out, this is, this is an issue within the Commonwealth, disposing of solid waste. So if, if a problem arises in any of the permitted facilities within the Commonwealth, the DEP steps in routinely, works with the community so affected, and assists in securing alternate sites. I'm sure that was the case when CMAAS suffered the explosion that they did, even though that our neighbor, Borne, stepped up, as Selectman Murphy indicated, and worked with us. And I would expect that to happen as a matter of standard operating procedure in the Commonwealth, because it's not in any of the general public's benefit in the Commonwealth to have solid waste piling up in any municipality anywhere in the Commonwealth. It is, as we all know, a matter of public health and safety. So I, I don't think we're alone if we have a problem. I think we're partnered with the regulatory agencies, and I think that we would be able to find an appropriate resolution, nor do I think it would be a long-term issue either. But those are concerns that we all share, and we recognize that there is that risk management element, no matter what we do.
And again, thank you for your time. The last question I have really is the heart of it in many ways, the, the financial piece of it. I think all of these subparts all relate to the financial piece too. But I, just for comparison sake, comparison sake, whatever did happen to the results of the county's negotiations with potential end sites for the acceptance of trash, which included CMAAS, Covanta, and others, I, I just never, and I apologize if it's been out there and I've missed it, but this is $58 a ton. Was there any final discussions with the county subgroup?
I, to the best of my knowledge, it still isn't an actual finite number set that the county, you know, they, they entered into an exclusive right to negotiate with Covanta for a period of time here, but I still don't think the county has actually come up with the number yet.
Well, they actually did put, put out bids, but the bids that came back, I think, are higher than, than the numbers here. I don't remember exactly what they are, but I know they were higher than what we would pay Borne.
And I, I do believe also that at least one community, was it Brewster or Harwich, decided to go it alone and?
With Covanta.
$78.
Was it $78 a ton? Yeah. So some, some communities have actually broken off from that, that block.
There are some communities in Western Mass that we could have as an end use that would be very attractive, but the transportation costs would eat those to that up to $48, $50 a ton. But, you know, you start, we're going up the road six miles, and that's the beauty of this contract.
Great. Thanks very much for your time.
Mr. Cavosa?
My name's Kyle Cavosa, and this is a subject that's near and dear to my heart. I think the Town of Falmouth did a great job negotiating with a contract with the Town of Borne. The ability to dump waste in the future at $58 a ton is, in the industry, just a phenomenal deal. So I commend the Selectmen for, you know, the hard work that they did to put a deal together and do that. Two things I'd like the Selectmen to understand is, we were bringing the commercial trash there over two years ago, and you're penalizing me for that. So I'd like you to consider the fact that all the other taxpayers in the community, the businesses in the community, are paying a higher rate to dump their waste in Borne because you wanted us to go to the transfer station. But now you yourselves have decided to go to Borne. So I'd like this board to consider approving the Borne landfill as an end disposal site, which in effect will lower the price, the tax, commercial haulers have to pay for all the commercial businesses in the community. That's the first thing. The second thing that I would ask the Selectmen is, when you negotiated this deal, the commercial haulers were not included. So we need to work somehow together to find an end disposal site for the commercial haulers. As you spoke about, the capacity in Borne is regulated by the DEP. You've taken up a portion of that capacity. Now, it coincides with the end contract for commercial haulers, so you're replacing that municipal tons with commercial tons, or you're replacing the commercial tons with municipal tons. So that leaves the businesses in our community on the Upper Cape in a quandary, where do we go? And that's going to drive the price of commercial waste disposal to wherever they decide to put it, because we won't be able to go to Borne, we'll have to go to Covanta. So I would ask the Selectmen to look into where the, the largest taxpaying base in the community disposes of its waste and the businesses in our community, because it does affect everybody. If, if you can't buy a hamburger down the street, if they can't dispose of their trash for a reasonable amount of money, the price is going to go up for that hamburger. So every business in our community is affected by that. It quite possibly could be the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station. There could be, it could be your transfer station on Thomas Landers Road, but there needs to be another source for commercial waste. Lastly, on Mr. Skumki's question about a backup plan for the Town of Falmouth, I believe there is a backup plan. You own to, or you participate in the transfer station out of Otis, and you also own a transfer station at your facility on Thomas Landers, which allows you to transfer MSW. So in the event that Borne or Covanta could not accept your waste, once you can transfer waste from the collection trucks that come around in the community to a larger truck, you can go anywhere in the state. There are several waste energy facilities and certainly other landfills that would accept your waste. Would it be at $58 a ton? No, it'd be a significant change in the price, but that would be the contingency backup plan, and I believe that exists now. And Mr. Suso's correct when he speaks about when Covanta blew up, they had an explosion there, the DEP actually stepped in and allowed Borne to exceed their, their daily capacity to solve that problem. So the DEP routinely will help with a contingency plan. Thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Cavosa, so you're suggesting that the town needs to find a disposal site for the commercial haulers that were?
When your first, when your first contract was negotiated with CMAAS, it included all the waste in the community, commercial waste, restaurant waste, from the church, every place. That was never honored. We would bring commercial waste to the facility, and they would not accept the commercial waste at the rate that they extended to the municipality. And if you read that contract, it clearly states that that was the case. It was one rate for all the waste in the community. And they specifically spoke about restaurants, industry, and churches. Now, that rate was never extended. I met with you, Mr. Putnam, and our previous town manager about this issue a few years ago. Covanta's never made good on that rate. Now, this new contract that's been extended to the municipal waste has not included, Mr. Susio spoke that, it includes all the waste in Falmouth. It includes the residential waste. It's, you're going to make that clear. It's not important to some, but it is important to most. You included, they included residential waste, but did not include commercial waste in that rate. There's a reason for that, and it probably goes back to Covanta's deal with Borne. When you leave the commercial hauler out, they get to negotiate with the commercial hauler separately. And when I say negotiate, I mean, they're going to charge us more. And in the past few years, we've been lucky, because you've been going to Covanta with a rate that nobody wanted to compete with, because you had such a favorable rate. So Borne was hungry, they needed the tons, they went out on the street, and they, and they put out competitive rates. Now that that tonnage has been eaten up in Borne, the commercial, the, the commercial businesses on the Upper Cape are going to see similar numbers to what Nantucket sees.
I guess one of the things that's confusing me right now is that you were not long ago yourself advocating that businesses, commercial haulers, could shop around for the cheapest price, and there was some contention there with regards to the Board of Health decisions and whether or not there should be fines or whether or not commercial haulers should be required to go to the, the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station. So on the one hand, you were arguing before that you should be able to shop around for the cheapest price, and now you're arguing that basically we have to shop around for you.
No, that's, that's not correct. You're confused. What, just so, just so you understand, you shopped around for the cheapest price. We shopped around for the cheapest price. Together, we could have got a much cheaper price than what you got, and I certainly can't get for the commercial folks. When, when you shopped around and got the cheap price from Covanta, it was for commercial waste, but you didn't honor it. And that's clear in the contract. That's a fact.
You just said Covanta didn't honor that. Now you're saying we didn't.
Yeah, well, you didn't enforce it, so, because we brought the trash to your transfer station. So once I brought it to your transfer station, it was really up to you to enforce it. You didn't. Covanta charged us what they want. Our pushback was not with Covanta, it was with the town, and the town couldn't honor that. So when you had the low rate, you didn't extend it to the commercial businesses in the community. I find it funny that now that you went out and you shopped around, you went to where the commercial haulers were going, and you and Covanta bought the airspace at that commercial site, at Borne. The commercial businesses can't go there anymore. You just pushed us out. But you didn't include any of the businesses in the community when you did that. So you took your, and, and really it was Covanta. Covanta didn't want the commercial waste from the Upper Cape going to that transfer station. So they bought the airspace. They can only take so many tons a day. Covanta bought it. You bought the rest. There's a very small amount left. There's not enough space there to bring our trash there, our commercial trash.
Have the commercial haulers been excluded from Borne at this point, or are they being told that they have to take their trash elsewhere?
No, because, no, because your contract doesn't start for two more years.
Right, but when our contract does begin, have commercial haulers been told that they can no longer bring their trash to Borne?
And when that time comes, to, to be inside, to operate inside their permit, we will not be allowed to go there.
Have you been told that?
It's imminent. It's not, it's not whether, we've been told, we've been told that there is not enough airspace at that facility to accept the commercial waste in the future.
Okay.
So, and, and what I'd like the board to understand is, right now, we're, I'm still paying a fine for going to Borne, yet you decided to bring your trash there. It's not an approved facility.
Well, in, in the bottom line is, the first question you asked about is, this contract's not effective until January 1st, 2015. At that time, we'll open up the Town of Borne's facility as an approved facility, not before that time. I mean, that's basically what, you know, this contract is. I mean, even though we signed it, it's not taking effect till January 1st, 2015. The point be told is that the, Covanta was a very shrewd company, and they bought almost all of the capacity at the Borne Solid Waste Facility for their of the capacity at the Bourne solid waste facility for their ash. That way, they put, took that off the table for most of the communities on the Cape. Bourne all of a sudden realized, geez, we're not going to be in the trash business. That's when they grabbed the last 24,000 tons they have a year of it, said to Covanta, and Covanta has gone back and said, we'd like to get that too. And they said, no, we want to stay in the solid waste business, we're not going to sell that. And that's when they started really trying to date the Town of Falmouth and push us forward. Now, there is an additional 12,000 tons a year, whether Mashpee or Sandwich takes that 12,000 tons, but I will say this, that I know the town manager asked to include our commercial waste as well. But unfortunately, they only have 24,000 tons. And they tried to include all the businesses in the community as well as an end, as an end location, just for traffic reasons alone. So, but unfortunately, Bourne didn't have the ability or the capacity to take it.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to, I don't want to sound adversarial. I'm not, I'm not, I think this board's done a great job negotiating the best contract they can for the residents in the community. I do want the board to work hard and roll up their sleeves and find a way to work with the commercial haulers better in the future than we have in the past. I'd like to be part of that. One thing I want everyone to understand is, there was always an issue with commercial trucks leaving the transfer station out at Otis and going over the bridge. And I think, Mary, we've talked about this, and several other selectmen have talked about this, the amount of traffic that we create, and, you know, what these transfer stations were really designed to do with rail. The Town of Bourne accepted the ash from Covanta. That ash is trash that comes out of the city of Boston and southeastern Massachusetts, that gets burned at the incinerator. All those trucks now are going to bring that ash over the bridge by truck, not by rail. So what we've tried to save by going that way over the bridge with the train, they've quadrupled coming the other way over the bridge. So I think it's important that we understand that. I do believe that the rail plays an important part in the future, and it might be just for commercial waste, but we need to really keep our eye on the ball there and keep that facility open and maybe looking at that as a commercial waste facility.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask, how many tons of commercial waste are there a year?
Our company only handles a portion of the commercial tons, and we might have between 25,000 and 40,000 tons a year.
Is that Capewide, or?
Yeah, that's Capewide. There could be anywhere as to 100,000 tons a year in the southeastern New Orleans area that's controlled by waste companies in the area.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Finneran first, and then you, John, okay?
Mark Finneran, Precinct 6. Before I comment on the contract, I'd like to comment on what Mr. Cavosa had to say. The town and the county, in their handling of this problem, and I've made this comment to you at the transfer station meeting, 50% of all the trash on Cape Cod is commercial trash. And they negotiated or decided they were going to handle our trash problem by handling half of it. I mean, it really doesn't make sense, you know, and I mean, regardless, I mean, their citizens too, corporate citizens or not, you know, I mean, I, I don't think it was the best negotiation. And as far as this contract goes, I mean, Bourne always said they were going to give us this tonnage if we needed it. There was no real negotiation. They never, they nor Covanta didn't put in a bid when all the other companies did. There was actually a company, Mrs. Flynn, that, that bid, I think, $51. Was it Howland, or, and they had a company to back them up? I don't remember who it was. But I'd just like to point out that four years ago, they started trying to get us to renegotiate the contract then. Mr. Jack, yourself, Mr. Chairman, Kerry Murphy, and others, and they wanted us to sign off at $78 a ton then. And I'd like to just point out that obviously they were wrong. Also, in this contract to Bourne, in the summertime, when we're busy, a lot of these trucks are going to have to make two trips a day. That means they're going to have to go to the afternoon, in the afternoon, they're going to have to go to the Bourne Rotary and around, and when the traffic is at its greatest height. And they're not going to do that for free. So that is going to cost us. Again, back to the $78 a ton. I mean, Brewster were just suckers, you know? They signed on, they shouldn't have. Where this doubling of the price came from, I don't know. It was purely speculation, because I have a proposal from Covanta in Bristol, Connecticut, and I left this in the selectmen's box last week, or last month, rather. This was issued on December 20, on December 6, 2012, for Bristol, Rhode Island. They handle about 19 communities there. And everybody knows, that knows anything about garbage, that in trash, whatever you want to call it, in New York, New Jersey, in Connecticut, it's the most expensive proposition probably in the United States. They raised their prices by between 0 and 5%. So it makes no sense to me that the exact same company with the exact same or similar facilities would raise our price by 100% when they're raising the prices in Connecticut by 0 to 5%. I'd like to say that I think it's not necessarily the best thing, although $58 is a good, we never even spoke to Covanta. And I can tell you that I know that Sandwich and Mashpee aren't really that happy about the whole thing. So on the one hand, Mr. Suso said that, you know, we can't speculate, but basically, you are speculating, because you don't know that they wouldn't have given us the exact same increase that they gave these people. And, you know, I think you could have, not that it's a bad price, but I, I think you left a whole other avenue and option unexplored, and we may have done better. And I'd just like to point out that, on the same subject, we still haven't gotten any money for our metal at the dump.
Stay on topic.
It, it is, it's the dump, it's trash, you know?
Stay on topic, we're on the contract.
The town lost on that as well. Thanks.
And just, just for your information and the folks out there information, we did get a price from Covanta, and the price was $68 a ton. You had the 28, $20 for transportation and handling at the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station. That's $88 a ton. So that's the difference, $58 to $88 a ton. And Mr. Finneran is exactly right, it's going to cost us a little bit more for our trash trucks to bring the waste there, and Mr. Jack is projecting another couple of dollars for those trucks to bring that trash there. So although you weren't privy to the negotiations, there was in fact a rate out there. Mr. Elliott, you're next.
I'm sorry?
You had your hand up.
John Elliott, I'm the Falmouth representative of the Board of Managers of the transfer station, and I would like to say, I have not had one minute of discussion with Mr. Suso and you, Kevin, about negotiations or what's going to happen with the transfer station. There are a couple of gentlemen in this room I have had discussions with, but not once have we had a discussion on it. Also, before I forget this one, you're talking about Bourne. Bourne was very nice to us when we had the fire at CMAS, but, you know, Bourne got paid double for that. They got our fee of the $37, plus they were paid by CMAS also at that time. So it wasn't a bad deal. I congratulate you on your contract with Bourne. I think it's a good deal, although I would still much rather see the trains running. I think it's the best way to get the stuff on the, on the way out of, out of town. And I don't know what's going to happen, or what's going to happen with the future of the transfer station. But if we lose that rail line up there, I think we're going to regret that, regret that for many, many years. And again, congratulations on that, but I want it very clear, I have never had a, when we were in a discussion about the transfer station with Mr. Suso. Thank you.
It's fine, John. As we said earlier, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? We get the contract settled, we have two years to work forward to work with the transfer station and what the future of it. We have two additional years between now and January 1st of 2015 to find the future of the transfer station. And we hope to work with those member communities to make sure there is a future of that facility.
There is, but there are some negoti, a lot of conversations going on about it now, about privatizing the station. That needs an awful lot of looking into, believe me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from, any further public comment? So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pause. There are quite a few copies of this, because we have copies for them, so I'm going to sign these and send them down, if I may.
Mr. Murphy, do you have enough time on the schedule? These folks came, these folks came to speak about, you know?
No, that's all set. That's already been approved. Okay? Thank you. We did that a long time ago. Okay.
Is there still comment here on the, on the trash?
No, we, we already took that comment. I, I asked if there was any additional comment, and no one put their hand up. The next is vote articles. Pardon me, we're going to do the town managers, oh, pardon, okay. Discussing about the acceptance of the Fire Department, student awareness, fire education, SAFE grant. Chief?
Hi, Mark Sullivan, Fire Chief.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Here tonight to ask that the board approve, recommend approval for us accepting a student awareness to fire safety education grant for the sum of $6,000 from the state of Massachusetts. It's a grant that allows us, it's been ongoing for 14 years. Every year we do it. We have especially trained educators into the schools, into the grammar schools, into the second grades, and teaches student fire education. At the end of the year, we have a accumulated effort where we take a safe, a safe trail around that we house, and the kids get to practice what they've learned.
Doug?
I would move that we accept this grant, and I, whatever our situation with the Finance Committee, but the timetable of this is they need this signed by February 1st, and it is a recurring grant that we've done year after year. And so for that reason, I would move that we go ahead and approve this grant.
I will second that, Mr. Chairman, for those reasons.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pause, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Do you want to talk a little bit about the grant that was approved by town meeting?
If I could update you on that.
Yes, please.
We just received a notification from the federal government, from the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, that we were awarded a grant in the sum of $400,000 for the town to purchase the safety program we put together. The total cost is $444,000. Our, the federal government share is 400,000, our share is 44,000. And it's to purchase a total new ensemble for the firefighters, including the SCBA's, the self-contained breathing apparatus, those like the scuba tanks, which are a basic need, they're about close to $7,000 apiece. And we've been nursing the ones we have along now, so that it's a basic need. Within the next year or two, we were going to have to purchase through some sort of capital funding anyhow. So this is a great, great effort for the town to get this award. Last year, we had to buy used bottles that only had a year's left lifespan, lifespan on them, and we were hoping to get through to this point to get this grant, and we kind of, successful. Deputy Small, I'd like to commend him for the writing of the grant, did a great job.
I do happen, I happened to meet the state fire marshal when I was at the.
Marshal Cohen?
Yes, at the MMA, who happens to also be a taxpayer in the Town of Falmouth, has a summer house out on the seacoast shores. And he spoke very highly of your diligence getting this, this grant, and was rather impressed that it was so large, that it rivaled very few departments in the amount of money that we were able to receive for that, for that grant. This has already been approved, incidentally?
Yeah, article.
It was approved through the town meeting.
Town meeting article, I think it was.
I just want to say, Chief, that you have a very successful track record on grant approvals, our grant results, and I, you're to be really congratulated on that. This is great that you are able to do this.
Appreciate it. We've been asked to think outside of the box.
Yes.
We're thinking or trying to get these, and this is a basic need. Some of these are basic needs that we are going to have to address sooner or later. And this is, this is great, because it'll give us some opportunity maybe to come request some other capital expenditure.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can I just comment as well, just to affirm, as the chief mentioned, this was approved as Article 33 in the Springtown meeting for the federal assistance to firefighter's grant, and my memory is, subject to the chief's confirming, is that the chief had identified this as a potential funding source early on, and shortly after my arrival as town manager, the chief mentioned that they were working diligently on this, and in spite of their best efforts, they, I think they came up short on the first round of funding. Thankfully, town meeting, working with the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee back in April, had approved the concept of the local match, and Article 33 was endorsed to the chief's great credit, working with Deputy Small and other personnel in packaging this. They doubled down their efforts and found a way to prevail and turn a, an initial negative into a positive with the results, Mr. Chairman, that you noted, that it is one of the significantly larger federal assistance to firefighter grants in the Commonwealth. And again, it comes from federal dollars, and it really represents the town's ability to recapture federal tax dollars that we're sending to Washington, to the great credit of the chief, his deputy small, other personnel in the department, and the support of this board, and Finance Committee and Town Meeting. So as the board's fully aware, you have a capital advisory committee meeting weekly, including members of this board, Doug and Brent, exploring a number of scenarios to try and afford the town's major emerging capital needs. This represents one of those, and the good news is that we can put this one in the win column and take it out of the town's needs for the next several years, because of the diligence of the chief and his personnel and everybody pulling together in support. So I did not want to leave that unsaid, and I want to join the board in applauding this great effort, and it's great to recapture federal tax dollars. And as a selectwoman, Flynn had said, the Fire Department's been very successful in that regard, and we applaud those efforts, look forward to that continuing in a targeted way to the best interest of the town's taxpayers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great.
Thank you. Just one quick thing, sir, as we were at a workshop a few weeks ago, and you mentioned about putting on new folks, and we just wanted to let you know, we have six brand new firefighters that started today, fully trained paramedics, and hopefully they will become manpower at some point down the road, but right now, at least they're on board.
Great, great. That's a great thing.
Six very young, enthusiastic paramedic firefighters.
Could you, you know, get, get over the, the names to the Board of Selectmen, so in case we happen to bump into them, we can congratulate them at some point in time? Just send us a.
I'll send it over email.
Yeah, but if you'd like to say who they are, it would be great for the folks out there.
Oh, sure, there's three, three folks live in Falmouth, and three are from out of town.
Okay, great.
Ted Freeman, Robert Flynn, Laura Sevier, Matthew Edwards, Casey Staggs, and Nicholas Zimmerman.
Great.
They'll be in a two-week orientation program and then assigned to a shift.
Sounds great. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next up is a presentation of the Town Manager's review summary. The Board of Selectmen has been working on the Town Managers', and I will pass these out to the board. Doug, can you pass down the signatures, so Pat can work on them? As the board, board knows, we, we have one more copy there, I'm sorry. As the board knows. board, board knows, we, we have one more copy there, I'm sorry. As the board knows, you submitted your, your copies of your evaluation, and I took the time to, to summarize those evaluations. And I'd like to go through them with the board, and we can go from there. Let me see here. Just, just so the board knows, this evaluation, there are certain areas to be able to give a point score. What I did was give an illustration in the first part, the executive director's performance evaluation, part one, section one, critical success factors. I took the needs improvement, the expected, and better than expected, and outstanding, and gave them a, a point, meaning one, two, three, and four, like you would in a college grade, one through four. And then gave the average, a score of what the board of selectmen's average score was. Town manager will have each individual. But the average score on community relations, improving the perception of the initiative and services provided, and the average score was better than expect, expected at 3.0. Financial results, management of operational performance, town manager's average score was 3.2, which means it was better than, better than expected and towards outstanding. Number three, leadership of staff, development of staff, alignment to organizational values and objection, objectives. The score was a 3.2, which means it was better than expected, leaning towards outstanding. Executive director performance evaluation, section one, critical success factors. Board relations, a well-informed board that works with the executive director and the executive manager, town manager, focusing on the things that make a positive difference. And again, this is on a 1.4 ratio, and that would be 3.2, meaning better than expected. Leadership of, in the profession, ensuring the strong, effective advocacy and mission, beliefs and objectives and strategies, again, a score of 3.2. The next section is agenda development, the issues selected for discussion and action by the board meetings. Assist the board in determining the key policies meant to guide the work of the organization, particularly in the areas of fiscal accountability and strategic direction. All the members agreed. The, the answers on this particular part are agree, neutral, or disagree. All members of the board agreed that they responded. Management, respect of the periodic updates between the meeting, meetings provided information needed to monitor staff performance in implementing these policies. They were all agreed on that particular item there as well. Preparation for meetings, board, board agenda information summarizes and highlights key issues for decision-making and challenges the board in their consideration of these issues. There was, all but one were agreed, and there was one neutral. The next one, board agenda books and any supplemental information I received in ample time and preparation for the meetings, all agreed. Board members liaison, working relationships with the board of selectmen are characterized by regular communication, the joint exploration based on mutual trust and responsiveness. All members of the board agreed on that. Board members receive the necessary support and information to fulfill their responsibility in representing the organization, meaning the town. They all agreed on that issue. Action and follow-up. Actions taken at board meetings are implemented in a manner and timeframe expected. All members of the board agreed on that. Other requests for information or follow-up, I handle appropriately in a timely fashion. All members of the board agreed on that. Connection to membership, the executive director, in this case, the town manager exhibits a viable presence--
Visible.
For visible presence and congenial style that connects with the community. All members of the board agreed on that. Representing the profession, the executive director, in this case, the town manager, is an effective advocate for the mission of creating excellence in, in local government through professional management. All members of the board agreed on that. Quality of communication, the executive director, in this case, the town manager, displays clear and effective two-way communications with a wide range of people, and is able, as appropriate, to explain, persuade, and convince, or influence others. There was one neutral, the rest, the rest who responded agreed. The next part of the evaluation would be recurring executive director commitments. And again, these are some of the scenarios that the board had asked for last year, some of the goals to the town manager. And this is scored on a one, one to three ratio, or zero to three ratio. So this would be out of a total possibility of three points. So one would be not done, two would be pending, and three would be completed. Reduced span and control by the town manager, and the score was a 2.2, higher than pending towards completed. Development, implement code of conduct, and the score on that was a 2.2. Establish OPEB account, the score on that was a three, which is completed. Carryover issues, that was a 2.0, meaning there are some additional carryover issues that needed to be addressed by the town manager. Leadership behavior assessment, this again is scored on a 1.4, meaning four being the best, one, one would be rarely or never, two is sometimes, three is mostly, and four is always. Building and sustaining relationship, the town manager establishes and maintains positive working relationships with people on all levels of the organization, key people in, in other organizations. His score on that was a 3.8 out of four. A commitment to achievement, the executive director, in this case, the town manager demonstrates a personal commitment to achievement of important organizational goals and objectives, score 3.8. Effective communication, the executive director displays clear and effective two-way communication with a wide range of people, is able, as appropriate, to explain, persuade, convince, and influence others, a 3.4 on that. Ethical behavior, our town manager models the highest standard of personal, professional, and institutional ethics, a 4.0 on that issue. Problem-solving capability, the town manager demonstrates an ability to understand a work situation, task, problem, or opportunity, and is able to develop and implement solutions that positively impact the greater good, a 3.8 score on that. Again, the next page is on a 1.4, the same type, rarely or never to, all the way to always. Flexible and openness, the town manager identifies and acknowledges the merits of different positions and needs. He listens actively and is willing to participate in open intellectual debate, a 3.8 score. Management of people, the town manager is able to create an environment that positively values staff and involves them in defining and achieving goals and objectives. Staff are encouraged to make decisions, to provide input into change and improvements in order to continually improve processes and procedures, a 3.6 score on that. Commitment to diversity, the executive director recognizes the importance of organizational diversity and is committed to the involvement and our commitment of all segments of the membership of the town, 3.6. Managerial expertise, the town manager applies effective management practices to achieve planned organizational goals and objectives at a cost that represents value, a 3.8 score. In the last, I think it's the last page, the last one here is managing, again, on a 1.1 to 4 ratio. Managing a political and cultural environment, the executive director understands and manages in a manner consistent with the conventions, structure, functions, and objectives of local government, and is widely, wider political, cultural, economic, and social environment in which it operates, a 3.6 score on that. Strategic leadership, the town manager is forward-thinking, always seeking and accepting challenges and opportunities to develop and communicate a clear and inspiring and relevant direction, a 3.6 score on that. Decision-making, the executive director, in this case, the town manager, acts promptly and decisively in all types of situations, and exhibits good judgment in the execution of his duties. The executive director, in this case, the town manager, demonstrates an ability to act without being forced by events or otherwise directed, a 3.2 score on that. And let me see if there's any additional. The last page on, on the evaluation would be strategic initiatives. Financial and economic stability and, and community development, again, this is on a 1.3, one to three score. It was scored at a 2.4. Coastal resources and, and beaches, again, on a 1.3, 2.2 score. The next is resource, reinforce conservation and manage, resource conservation and management, again, a 2.2 score, and water and wastewater planning, a 2.2 score. Again, this is a, is a summary of all of the board's evaluations. I encourage each and every one of you to individually speak with the town manager. If you have concerns about any and all of the issues, or even want to let the town manager know that, that you have some positive things to say about him in the direction that we'd like to move forward with, I would like to ask the board two particular issues before. One would be that we would deal with his goals for 2013. Before we get that, to that, we need to speak in regard to remuneration of the town manager. If the board is aware, I just wanted to make sure, I'll hand this out. The town manager's contract provides for an opportunity for a merit increase, but the contract also provides for a cost of living adjustment increase granted the same as to department head positions for the fiscal year 2013, and so on, and so on, besides any merit raise that the board might consider. Just for the board's information, the town manager has not, on his own, which began in 2000, in the year 2013 fiscal year, which was July the 1st, has not, on his own, taken his cost of limit increase. He wanted to make sure that, that that was in fact all right with the board, wanted to make sure that he didn't presume, but it does clearly state in his contract that the board signed that that is part of his remuneration. So I would like to at least, before we even talk about anything in the form of, of a merit, that the board vote to instruct the town manager to take the, the same COLA increase that, at the beginning of each fiscal year that the rest of the department heads take. So that would have been retroactive to July the 1st of 2012. The COLA was 1.5%. And then again, in July 1 of 2013, the COLA would be 2.25%. Quite candidly, I don't think it's something necessary for the board to do, because it is in the contract, but I think the town manager would feel more comfortable if the board acknowledged that, that that is in fact in the contract.
Take a motion to that effect?
Sure. Why don't, why don't we do that, that the town manager be instructed to take his COLA increases as dictated by the contract?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Do I have any discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Yeah, ayes have it. We need to discuss a little bit. This is a, a different process since the last time I was on the board. The process is in the public eye, and the new open meeting law provides for this. And the issue of remuneration is always an issue that, that is sometimes very hard to do in an open and public process, but it's something that, that's required of this board. The town manager's contract currently pays the town manager $150,000 a year. The board negotiated this contract, and that was, I believe, less, if I'm not mistaken, than what the current, the town manager was making in his former town. The board negotiated in, in good faith and said that we would hope that after a year, we would look and evaluate the town manager and, and make a decision on whether we would increase that remuneration. So I'd open that up to discussion with the board. If we remember, there was some discussion with the board that, and the board had asked me to negotiate back then with the town manager, because the, the board was somewhat split on what we would pay him as an offer. And there were some that were a little higher, and we could have gotten a vote to, to pay him a little more higher at that time. But my suggestion was to town manager that he would have an unanimous vote at $150,000 when he took the job, and that he wanted to make sure that he had the votes of everybody on this board. So I'm not gonna be the one doing all the talking here, so.
Well, would you like to be the one that might propose what, what you think an appropriate percentage increase might be?
Well, we could do it as a percentage or, or a dollar amount.
Well, with the COLAs added in, it's about an additional 48.75, right? So--
Well, that, that's the COLAs themselves. That's typically the cost--
That's what I'm getting at. Well, I understand that, and, look, there's nobody sitting here at this table, more than me, who can tell you what Julian has done for me over this past year with different issues. He'll tell you, we just took care of one the other day. But, you know, I understand the cost of living increase, Mr. Chairman, but I just, at this point, and this is not, he deserves it, but I just think it's not the time for the leadership to be getting additional pay raises when I think we need to send a message that the employees who have gone without for a number of years and done their part, and Julian, and it's not a reflection on you, believe me, I typed 11 pages, as I'm sure you read every one of them of this evaluation, and I had nothing wrong to say about any of it, it was all positive, but it's just my feeling, Mr. Chairman, and I understand that.
Right. And I, I just want to make one, one comment in regard to that. The COLA increases that you're speaking of are cost of living increases. Many employ in this community, even though they may have not, you know, may have taken a furlough day, still were able to, in my, from what I understand, were able to take their step raises. There were no COLA increases at those times.
Well--
The town manager's job doesn't provide for any kind of step. So that's why we talk about a merit.
No, I understand that, but my, also, I, maybe I didn't roll into it, is I, I think we need to show the public, who are really, right about now, really still wondering what we are doing. They don't have much confidence in financial things we have been handling. We're trying to do the best we can, and we have come a long way, and Julian, to me, has done, every goal that was set out is completed, just some that are in process, which are not under his control. But that's my opinion, and it's, I just had to make it. And it's no reflection on you, Julian. You were close friends, you understand that. I, I just, it's my opinion at this time, Mr. Chairman, so. I just, it's my opinion at this time, Mr. Chairman, so.
Well, I'd like to make a statement in regard to that. Again, I think the board originally, with the exception of Doug, the original number that the board was going to offer Mr. Suso was $160,000. We debated that, and to be able to come up with the unanimous decision, and there was a decision that could have got him, could have paid him $160,000, there would have been a majority, but it would not have been a unanimous decision. So I think there's limbo there in the sense. I think if this board were to look at the things that we've accomplished in a year, the financial viability of the community, the hiring of a finance director, putting together a scenario of how we're more stable as a community, you talked to any department head this year going through the budget process, there is a lot more breathing room in that. There is surely, we're surely not on the best of financial footing versus years ago when, you know, growth in this community outside Proposition 2.5 was, provided us an additional 4%. I was speaking with the chairman of the school committee the other day, and she had been looking back, and there were some years that they were able to get a 6% increase in their budget. The reason is because we had 2.5% under the levy, but there was so much additional growth in this community with building. I mean, looking out there with Mr. McNamara, the amount of the workload is high at the Board of Appeals, but it's nothing like it probably was, you know, five, six years ago. So that new growth, that new incremental growth provided for those increases, but the town seems to be on a little bit more stable thing because of financial footing, because we're able to do more with less. I think we're going to be able to avoid doing a debt exclusion this year for the capital because we were able to find some monies to be able to do that. That didn't all just happen. I think it comes from the town manager's office, so.
Pat?
Well, I was going to say that you have to remember that the clause that relates to the COLA is the town manager gets the COLA when the employees get the COLA. If the employees don't get a COLA, the town manager doesn't get a COLA, as I read that contract. So, but here, we're looking at the person that we hired to be the leader of this community with specific requirements, as that they're laid out in the charter, but there, some of them are laid out in the contract. But also, town managers have a certain professional code of ethics of their own that is written by the ICMA, and I think Julian has certainly met those requirements of the professional organization, not only for the code of ethics, but for the training and for the attendance, the continuing education that I think is really important, and obviously Heather's done a lot of that too, but we're not talking about her tonight. But what they, that brings value back to the community. And I think the other efforts over the course of the year, being able to execute a change in a department, creating the Department of Finance, I think was a major goal and objective that the town had, and I thought that that was executed extremely well in getting the support of the community as well as the support of town meeting. We have to remember, too, that many of our employees are members of collective bargaining units, and all of their salaries and COLAs are all part of what they bargain in terms of what they receive. But I think you have to look at this past year and see what the real positive actions that the town manager has taken. And I think one in particular is reaching out to the community and making, and being available to the community, and I think he's done an outstanding job in bringing the community into town hall and reaching out to people and being responsive to the town, attending a lot of meetings, chamber meetings, finance committee meetings, school committee meetings. I don't know what all these attended, but I see him out at night, so I know that he's acting on behalf of the community. So I would think that, and you're right about the starting salary, that got lowered pretty much with the idea that we'd take a look after one year and see where we needed to go from there. So I think that we should consider a very reasonable and appropriate compensatory amount for this past year of a job well done. And if you look at the evaluation in every category, it's, what are those words, beyond, more than expected, or beyond expectations, something like that. I think Doug has something to say.
Doug, just on the numbers, as I understand from the COLA, is that the, that would mean that the 2012 salary would be 152, 250, and then the next year's COLA is then compounded upon that.
That's correct.
Which would get that up to 156,056. I appreciate Selma Braga's point, and I don't think that this is even close to what Julian deserves, but I would move that we have his 2013 fiscal salary be 160,000 to get us up there. I think we could go way beyond that, but I do think we're at a fiscal pinch right now, but I would like to acknowledge the efforts and the great job that Julian has done this year.
I'll second that.
So, just, okay, so the motion and a second, just sort of clarifying. So you're saying July 1 of this year, it would be?
160,000, which would be, 156, it's already going to be by the COLA, so really it's only an increase of 4,000, my, or 3,000.
Okay, so that would include both COLA, well, he'll be taking his, by tonight's vote, he would have taken his regular COLA this past.
Yes.
For this past year.
Right.
The 1.5.
Retroactively.
And then the 2.25 plus an additional increase, which would bring him to 160,000.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Okay.
A point, the anniversary date is really November. It's not July.
That's correct.
Because he was hired in November of 2011.
2011.
2011, so the anniversary date should really be November. Not for the COLA, I don't know when the COLAs are normally given on July 1. I think the COLAs are separate, and whatever they are, they are.
Right.
But I would think that the salary increase that we would propose would be effective in November, because we're a little, two months sort of behind, not really, but.
Well, the contract does call for a review in November, it's just taken us a little longer to get there.
Right, and that happens.
And we had to work with town council to be able to make sure.
But I would think that the anniversary date is the more appropriate time to award the merit increase. They're usually on an annual basis, if you all agree to that.
We're looking over at our math teacher over here, so, the head of the math department, I might add.
Let me ask a question. Our employees usually receive their merits on their anniversary dates, or do they receive them in July?
Anniversary.
Anniversary dates?
Right.
Okay.
For.
For department heads.
Yeah. That's, that's the step increase that they're taking.
Everyone else, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, that's right, or on step increases, so they get them in July.
Fiscal year.
Right.
Are they fiscal?
If you're eligible for a step increase, that occurs at the fiscal year in addition to the COLAs.
Well, I guess a more appropriate question is, do we put the money in the budget to do this as of November, or do we?
Well, you bring up a good point, Pat, and if I remember correctly, the reason we wanted to review Julian in November was so that we could budget for this for the next fiscal year. So I think Doug's motion is appropriate. So I know that we do have some reserve for this past years because we're hoping to settle contracts with FIRE and other folks, so there's some reserve there for the COLA. But I think Doug's original motion would be appropriate to bring the additional, it up to the 460,000.
That's also the way I read it, by his contract saying that the compensation formula shall be by fiscal year.
Oh.
Yeah, so I think it is appropriate, what you're talking about. So the actual increase we would be voting tonight, Doug, rather than say the 160,000, give me that dollar increase you said, because I think that's important to say that.
I guess it would be the COLA increase and then plus $3,944.
So that really is the motion, because the COLAs would be automatic, 3,000? Okay, Brett?
Perhaps my math is wrong.
What were the percentages again on the COLAs?
1.5.
It was.
And then 2.25.
But the 2.25 is compounded on top of the 150, 250, right?
Correct, right.
I thought it was 2.5, that's where I may be off.
So. I'm just trying to figure out which comes first, the chicken or the egg here, I guess. Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a question. Under Section 4, Salary, Paragraph A, it mentions additional merit pay increase based on performance as set forth in Section 5, and then we have, below this, there's Section 5, Paragraph A and B. Are there any additional paragraphs? It's been quite some time since I looked at this contract, and I do not recall if there's any guidance in here with respect to what the board might consider for a merit increase, or is it?
No, there was no, I do remember, I don't know whether there's others, but I know that there was no caps, there was no ideas on that when we put the contract together. In other words, you're saying within a range of, I know that wasn't there.
I do, since I thought the COLA was 2.5, under 2.25, the actual dollar increase would be 4,325.
That's what I got, and that's why I was a little confused.
Okay. So do you want to amend your motion to say that?
Yes, absolutely.
4,325?
Yes, to make it up to 160.
And that would become, that would be?
July 1, 2013.
13, and you want?
I'll second that.
A second. Okay, we're still discussing this now, go ahead, Brett.
And perhaps Mr. Jones can confirm, but it looks like a 2.84% increase roughly.
The 160 over what he's making, would be making, increase over what? 2012, 2013, or 2013 without the COLA?
Well, the 4,325 that I came up with was based on his COLA first, so it would be 155, 675 was the base with the two COLAs. And then you said 4,325, that brings us up to the 160 even, which is a 2.84% increase, if my math is correct.
That sounds just about right, yep.
Okay.
Any additional discussion of this?
I guess, from my experience in the private sector, that is a reasonable increase in the current economic climate for someone with this kind of a performance review. I guess the only question I have is how that relates to the public sector, because obviously we're not talking about a private institution, we're talking about a public community, a public institution. Is that an appropriate rate of increase for this performance, with this level of performance? Do we have any reference points?
Well, maybe I could ask Heather, keeping Julian out of this, what is a typical step increase percentage-wise on a department head? Is there a percentage that a step increase typically is?
I believe they range between 3 and 4%.
Okay, all right, and I could tell you this, that I wholeheartedly agree with you in regard to the normal increases in the public, private sector, and 5 would be high on a good review, unless you're changing jobs, of course, and then, you know, you look for a 10 to 15, but 5 on a good review is the high point, and, you know, you can zero out in the private sector as well. So I think this is well within the range, especially for that performance. 2.84 is above average, but it's not an outstanding raise.
Well, I can tell you, like I said, my experience has been more or less 1 to 3% for being extraordinary. Like I say, in this economy, in years past, a decade or so ago, it was not uncommon to see double-digit raises or double-digit percentages in the private sector, but these days, it's real tough to get more than 3 or 4%, to be honest with you. So that's why I say this is, I think, it is representative of what you'd see in the private sector for this kind of performance.
Okay, do we have any other discussion on the board? So the motion is that the salary increase would be 4,325, which would bring the town manager to 160,000 after his 2013, 2014 COLA, right? So I have a motion and a second. With barring any further comment from the board, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both?
No.
Okay. The next part of this evaluation is, of course, the board needs to set some goals for Mr. Suso as we move forward. The goals, of course, were to help us evaluate the town manager and provide him an accurate score, or something accurate to be, to have his evaluation judged on. I had asked the town manager to draw up some, and I also had suggested that the board of select would look at any potential goals that the board might have as well. Mr. Suso, do you want to go through those?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you noted, I just have, I drew up a draft of some suggested goals from the board. I know we followed a similar process a year ago, and these are just bullet points to, for the board to consider. Nothing sacred about any of them, but I think you'll recognize them all, and I welcome additional expansion suggestions, et cetera, but beginning at the top, no particular order, is the completion of the Town Hall Administrative Office Space Analysis we've been discussing, and as I've mentioned, the board anticipate that that will be initiated yet, you know, before the end of this fiscal year, waiting until after the completion of Spring Town Meeting to start that process, but it is a process. I've already spoken with Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper and Personnel Director Denise Coleman, they will be involved in that analysis. I may have an additional staff member as well, but at this point, not certain about that. But I am certain that it will be initiated, and it will be comprehensive, looking at the full range of town departments, because as the board is aware, the, this town is complex and diverse in terms of its number of departments. It also includes some offices that are in, currently in space for which we're paying monthly, additional monthly compensation because they're not in town-owned properties. So the board has made it clear that that is to be looked at as well, and that will be part of the comprehensive process, but not a single department, all across the board. Continuing, also facilitate the wind turbine decision-making process. I would love to put some particular decision points within this, but I think we all recognize that this community and this board is breaking new ground in terms of the decisions and responsibilities lying ahead, and it's important to be critical to facilitating and fully supporting that process. Also, water, wastewater planning and implementation, two other very important pieces we are in the midst of. They will have corollary issues in the annual town meeting, some of which we're going to talk about in the next item on the agenda. Also important to continue to work with the committees involved in that and the staff members involved in that in thoughtfully planning, along with the finance director as well, the capital spending decisions to be made in that process. Continuing to fully implement the merger of Harbor Master and Natural Resources and Department of Marine and Environmental Services. That, of course, is proposed to be fully operational as of July 1 with the FY14 budget. There are some remaining pieces to be put in place, some of which will be brought to town, are being brought to town meeting at their annual, in the upcoming annual meeting. Another piece particularly to be voted by this board as yet on the staff, the staff end, and we are in the midst of negotiations in terms of collective bargaining on staff positions that we're required to accomplish as well. So that is going forward in implementation. It's important to continue the review for further administrative mergers. Boards made it clear that that's a priority, and consolidations or efficiency enhancement. Boards made it clear that that's a priority, and consolidations or efficiency enhancements that will serve the town and the taxpayers well. Continue to look at those along the lines of Marine and Environmental Services, along the lines of the Finance Department. Some perhaps smaller, but equally important to be continued to be looked at. Continuing to complete the final recommendations for ESCO projects, as the boards are aware. Town Meeting authorized our moving ahead on that in November. In a perfect world, we might have completed the list of projects to bring for the spring. That's going to take a little bit more time. Finishing the contract process with the ESCO firm, as well as bringing in, we have a staff, part-time staff position that was authorized at the same time by Town Meeting, as well as an outside consultant to work with us in this process, anticipating that that will come to closure in recommendation form in the November Town Meeting, if all goes forward as anticipated. The final major item on this list is the development of a ten-year capital plan. As we've said, you know, working closely with the Board of Selectmen's Capital Advisory Committee, making great strides in terms of issues discussed and revenues identified. And we've made great strides in setting aside capital funds that will become available on an ongoing basis to supplement what this board's already done with the meals tax revenue. So, those reports are yet to unfold. Again, Selectmen, Putnam, and Jones are heavily involved in that, with a report to be forthcoming to Spring Town Meeting, and then certainly the capital plan to be finalized as well. So, those are the items that come to my mind, and it's not intended to be all-encompassing, but some suggestions to begin discussion for the board to come to closure at this meeting, or whatever meeting in the future you're comfortable doing so.
I have a couple of suggestions in regard to a couple of these, a couple of, two broad, like, i.e. number one, complete the Town Hall Administrative Office Space Analysis. Between now and next year's review, I think it's fair to say that we can complete the analysis and begin the implementation. Analysis is, let's look at it, let's figure it out. Let's start moving forward. We know we have space, we know we need the allocation. Let's start to move towards that. We may not be able to accomplish it all, but we surely need to start taking some steps. Specifically, one of the areas that the board has spoken of is Town Council. Would like to bring Town Council's office in, into a town property, that's one. We know the Veteran Services has spoken about their desire for an allocation, but we're looking at this as a town-wide scenario, but let's not just look at it, let's start an implementation plan. I don't think we, Board will require you to implement the entire scenario, but we need to show some action.
So, are you wanting to add the word "implementation" at the end of that?
Yes, yes. Complete town-wide administrative office space analysis.
Have to be agreeable.
Yeah, I think you're saying, and begin implementation.
And begin implementation.
Excellent.
And begin implementation.
Excellent.
And the, you know, facilitate wind turbine decision-making process. I think, and implement, I think another word would be, and implement the board's decision. In other words, we may come up with a way to move forward, but we don't run the day-to-day operations. We want you to start the implementation process of whatever we may come up with as a solution under your office.
Certainly.
Of course, you're going to assign that to somebody else. Brett?
Mr. Chairman, before we get too far, I'd like to remind everyone that we still have this year's goals, some of which are not complete. And I think, I don't want you to get too far down the road...
Sure.
Because honestly, there aren't too many of the suggested goals here that I would be inclined to pursue. But if you want to go down and discuss them individually, I think the first one is a good goal, and I have no complaints or concerns about that one. The wind turbine decision-making process, though, that was one of those items that we had called a carryover issue. And one of the other carryover issues that we had was Valley Meet, and I guess the question is, is how many of, with that specific goal, addressing the carryover issues, how many of those do we want to continue to have the town manager pursue as goals, or are they simply going to be addressed in the normal course of business? Goals are usually things that we look at above and beyond, and things that, and one term that's often used is BHAG, the Big Hairy Audacious Goals, things that we'd expect the town manager to reach for, as opposed to something that we would see him do in the normal course of his work. And some of the things, like reducing the span of control, I think we'd like to see that continue. I mean, obviously, some great strides have been made, but there's still a lot of work to be done there. And that's one of those big hairy audacious goals that is going to require some effort in order for it to be completed. But again, I don't want to get too far down the road myself here.
And let me stop you there and say, I wholeheartedly agree with you, but we also have to make the goal attainable.
Right.
And given illustration, it says, "Continue review, further administrative mergers." And this past year, when we talked about consolidations, span of control, he was able to consolidate the Finance Department, the Harbor Masters, and the Natural Resources. Maybe we need to say, continue for further administrative mergers and provide one, a minimum of one, maybe two additional mergers, or, in other words, provide an actual goal then, not just to continue to, you know, to investigate, but look to implement, and some, you know, one additional merger in some form or fashion. I don't know whether that's attainable or not. I know last year, you had save one percent off the budget, and I like that. I mean, that was, that was good. Actually, that got thrown under the table, because we didn't have a Finance Director, but maybe that needs to be brought back on the table.
And perhaps, if I may make the suggestion...
Sure.
Perhaps we'd like to do some brainstorming and come back and review these.
Oh, yeah. Don't say this has to be done tonight.
Okay, all right.
You know, that's why we wanted to talk about what his are, and maybe some other folks had some recommendations.
And I was going to say, while we're thinking about this and bringing it back, I think what would be helpful for us next year is if the town manager would give us a presentation on the goals, you know, what was accomplished, what still needs to be done, about a couple of weeks before we do the evaluation. Because when I was reading these, I was thinking, gee, I wonder if, where are, where is that in the process?
Good idea.
And having a presentation for all of us about the goals just a couple of weeks ahead of time might be helpful for us in doing the evaluation.
That's a great idea. And of course, we'll put it on his look-up file to make sure that they were fully accomplished as well.
He gets it done, and we get it done.
Oh, yeah, no.
Right.
And I know this is something that's part of his regular job, but maybe include in this list are personal change, personnel changes, that, there's a bunch of work that Julian's going to have to do this year with Police Chief, with Town Assessor, with hiring some of the Deputy Director for the Waste Management Facility that need to be, certainly goals, because he's going to do them, but then I agree with Pat then to hear them in November, saying, this is some things that they've done, would be great to know, to reflect on.
But we also want to, like, remember, we sat down at our, at our retreat, and we took what was maybe eight or 10, you know, strategic things, and we merged them and came up with four. So, I don't think we want to, too many, four or five would be, but again, following up with what Brett says, there are some that are part of his normal day-to-day operations. Go ahead, Pat.
No, I was just going to say, four is like a lot.
Yep.
I mean, to really...
Okay.
Because, because the idea is, you really want to accomplish them in a year. It's not, you don't want to really have to carry them over to the next year. There ought to be things that are specific enough to be able to be accomplished in a given year.
Right. I mean, you know, this, like, given illustration, facilitate wastewater planning and implement the process, that's something that's going to take the next generation.
Forty years.
Yeah. I mean, it's going to take a whole generation. So, I don't think that's something necessary, that's something we're going to have to continue to work on, day in and day out, but I don't know if that's necessarily a goal.
But if we take it off, then this means he's not going to do it, right?
I don't think so. I like the term you use, you know, something that's, you know, big hearing of days.
But it has to be achievable, you're absolutely right.
Specific, measurable, attainable.
You're exactly right, yep.
The old categories.
Does anyone have any other input? Well, before we, you know, we'll try to bring this back for next week. David?
Nope.
Nope? Okay. Okay, so why don't we, Board, look at this a little bit? Pardon me, go ahead.
Yeah, no, just put it back on again.
Yep, we'll put it on next week, and hopefully, folks have a little time to talk about it. All right. Next up is, vote the articles and execute the warrant for April two thousand and thirteen Annual Town Meeting. This is for the annual town meeting?
May I make a comment?
Sure.
Whoever did the warrant, I really like the looks of it. It's much the one that, where I think we're more familiar with from the past, with the, you know, the numbers in bold, and the boxes, and all that. I think it's great. I really like the looks of it.
Well, do you want to say who did it, or do you know?
I mean, I don't know who did it.
Jennifer Petit carried the ball fundamentally.
Ah.
We're still working, of course, with Town Council's office, Pat Harrison Kim, as well, but Jennifer, I think you see the impact of Jennifer's influence, and the intention is that she will continue to have this level of involvement, which carries directly over to the Finance Committee and all their work.
It's an easy...
So, I want to acknowledge Jennifer for her great work there.
It's an easy read, I mean, everything is clear, you don't have to...I thought it was very well done.
Okay.
Page one?
Yes, sure, we'll go page one. And I'll go down the list here. Do you, you guys don't want me to read every article, do you?
No.
Let's just do page one.
One through six.
Which article? One through six.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we vote Articles one through six to be included in the warrant.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on these articles? Without further ado then?
Mr. Chairman, pardon me, may I just make a note?
Sure.
I wanted the board to be aware, on Article four, which is one we've seen in the past on the grants, some minor wordsmithing there that I wanted the board to be aware of. In the past, this had dictated that public hearings be held, and of course, as the boards are aware, and we've discussed grants at public meetings, we've not advertised and set formal public hearings, which is going to generate its own costs, incident to reviewing all grants, which I don't think was within the original intent of the Board or the Finance Committee. So, where it said "hearing," the word "meeting" is substituted, and also a clause added after the word "further" near the end. Further, the Board of Selectmen shall advise the Finance Committee of anticipated costs prior to the public meeting, which was in there in the past, except it said "public hearing," but the next phrase was "not," and may seek further review and comment of the Finance Committee. Actually, that language, that phrase was not in the original article, and I believe the way it has developed with this board, you have indeed sought the comment of the Finance Committee. So, I thought you may wish, again, it says "may," which covers the instance that you had this time, where your timetable did not allow you to seek their concurrence or their review, but it allows that, and makes it clear that that would be your intent where it's appropriate. So, a few changes there, I wanted to be clear with the board. Pardon me, Mr. Chairman.
I wholeheartedly think it clarifies that, because the word "hearing" versus "meeting" are really two different things, so a public meeting is typically what we have on a Monday night, and I think that's appropriate.
And to clarify on what we just did with the Fires Department, I see no anticipated future costs with that grant, and my reading of this article is, therefore, we wouldn't have to get review of Finance Committee if we really look and say, no, this is a, something that is covering itself and is not going to require future costs.
Right, and I think it's...
Yeah, it's right.
...future costs and maintenance on those, but that's not what you're talking about, additional monies from the town.
That was the, I'm talking about the safe grant we did tonight, which was not anticipated costs.
Absolutely.
Four hundred thousand dollar grant, absolutely, there are going to be additional costs in the future related to that. But the one we did tonight, I, we do not see anticipated future costs.
Right. I mean, a few, about a month ago, we had one that came up about a trail. Well, that included maintenance of the trailer, registering it, so those were the type of costs.
Right, yep.
You're exactly right.
Well, I see the Finance Committee didn't recommend any raises for us.
Well, I think the town manager just...
Can I add an item on that to Chairman and Selectwoman Flynn? Actually, I have requested of the Personnel Director, just as a matter of course, and Denise has completed a survey of elected official salaries as a courtesy to transmit to the Finance Committee. So, as you'll note here, with the exception of cost of living adjustment for the town clerk, which is identical to the cost of living that other employees have already experienced with the town clerk, because his salary has to be voted by charter, we did a little catching up on that for the two cost of living items that we spoke about tonight. But other than that, the Moderator, Selectman, and Selectman Chair are, remain fixed as they were, but we are providing that information to the Finance Committee, and I'll be transmitting that to the Board of Selectmen as well. Again, it's just a survey of communities of similar size and complexity that can be expanded, contracted, whatever, so that the Finance Committee could make a reasonable judgment upon that.
Well, I didn't know that, I was being very facetious.
Well, I mean, if the board remembers about four, five years ago, we had made a suggestion, the Finance Committee...
That's right, that they do it.
The Finance Committee was quite clear that they would make that changes, so we just left them that way, and we made, so he sent a survey, and if they want to make those changes, they can do so.
See, that was a charter change back in, I forgot, I think when I was Chair, the charter, because some, the Selectmen never wanted to propose their own salary increases, so they never went anywhere, ever. So, by, you know, by asking the Finance Committee to do it, it was a more neutral type of thing, and it worked out just fine.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion for Articles one through six. And barring any further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Close? Ayes have it. Okay. Articles, Article seven and page two.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we add Articles seven to the warrant.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Ayes have it. We're going to go, the next is the...
Page nine.
Wind turbine bylaws, which is quite lengthy, so we go to page nine?
No, that's what we just did, the bylaw.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we add Articles eight, nine, and ten to the warrant.
Eight, nine, and ten?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The ayes have it. All right, page ten.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we add Articles eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen to the warrant.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Close? The ayes have it. Page eleven.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we add Articles fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen to the warrant.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The ayes have it. Julian, what article is the water and wastewater, sorry, I was looking?
Twenty.
Twenty?
Twenty, and the annual budget is nineteen.
Okay.
We have to work on Article twenty.
Before we do page twelve, I think we need to discuss Article twenty specifically. Nineteen is the budget. Article twenty specifically, and that is the...
Water filtration and the wastewater?
Issue. It's on, on the warrant as one article, so that would go to the voters as one particular, you know, debt exclusion. There is quote-unquote "a window of opportunity," there would be both water, wastewater, and then there's some capital needs at the water treatment, wastewater treatment facility that are also part of that. We could put forward the article as it is, or there is a potential that we could do two articles. One would be for the wastewater, one would be for the water filtration. I believe the Eric Turkington's group, the, I'm trying to think of what their name was...
The Wastewater Quality Management Committee.
Wastewater Quality Management.
Yeah, the Water Quality.
Water Quality Management. Would like to see the articles together, the issues together. I think they go hand in hand, because it is, it is in fact water-related, so I'm going to leave that up to the board's decision.
Well, I think, I think there's another reason why it should go together, because it is the Water Quality Management Committee, but it is water, wastewater, I mean, they do go together, but also... I mean, they do go together, but also the funding is retired debt. And so, and the retired debt is used for both. So it kind of makes sense to have the article as one so that, because the funding is from one source for all of that. That's what I think. And it makes it so much easier on the ballot.
We're not going to please all the people all the time on this issue. I'm going to say that. Some folks might not be happy about that. Some folks might like it split. So that's my, really would like a little thought on this before we.
And in the board's packet is a scenario that shows a split out of two separate articles. A couple pages behind the proposed Article twenty. Is it Article twenty with two elements sort of?
I can say that I am typically not always in favor of this. I think that we have seen in the past with some capital projects that we've had some, for the lack of a better term, a weak sister that has brought down the whole ship. But in this case, I think, I think it's appropriate.
Personally, Mr. Chairman, I think they should be separated. I think town meeting would expect that. While I understand that there may be some connection between the two, the reality is we're talking wastewater in one situation and water in another. And especially given the attention paid to the water filtration issue and the various reports that town meeting's been given over the past few years about what solution was going to be presented and the costs associated with it, I think it would behoove us to keep them separate.
Doug, David?
I agree. I think they should be separate. I think they're two standalone issues.
I think the information on the two articles is different enough and lengthy enough that I think that as opposed to trying to do one presentation that covers both the filtration plant and the whole wastewater management plan would certainly go against what our moderators put forward as our present, I mean, there wouldn't be enough time to cover both those issues. They're just too big. I just think that the town meeting needs to get the information on both those packages.
Well, you explain it in a little different, different context that way than I would have been thinking about it. And I tend to agree with you the way you just explained that. So.
I think they're both need to get passed. I think we're going to have to work very hard to get them passed. And I'm hoping that the more information that the town meeting members and the town has given, the better chance they'll both pass.
So we would look to make one of them Article twenty, and then one of them maybe Article twenty-one, and then we'd move every other article out one. Okay? So just by merely the fact where they are here, the first one in regard to.
Wastewater.
Wastewater would be Article twenty, and then the second one would be Article twenty-one. Is that what you're saying? And then we would just move every other article out further.
Well, I understand what Brent and Doug are saying. That in a sense, they are different because they've been considered differently as we've been moving forward. They're not on the same path, so to speak. But now they are kind of on the same path. I don't know. I, it's really a judgment call is what it is. And if three people, if three people on this board think it should be that way, I'm not going to dissent because I don't want it to be a split vote.
Well, that's why I'm saying the same thing. It appears that that's where it comes. And I surely think that we need to provide leadership moving both of these issues forward. Keep in mind that both of these issues, we're under some state mandates on.
Right.
So, I mean, it's going to be very important for this board, no matter whether they're together or separate, that.
And it's important they both pass.
Right.
And is it easier for them to both pass in one article or if they were separate articles? Because it's really, we're under a, we're not under a consent order yet, are we? No, we're not under consent order yet on the water. But, but the wastewater has to move forward because of the timelines on the, what do you call it? The sewer relief, I always call the sewer relief fund, but that's not what it is.
Right, the revolving.
Revolving fund, right. The state revolving fund.
I agree with you. My initial inclination is to think of one article because it'd be easier for them to pass. But then I thought, well, that's not the, you know, that isn't the right argument. We can't say we're trying to pass them more easily. We need to give the town meeting and the town the right information and come up with the argument that they both deserve to pass individually as opposed to we're going to get away with passing one more easily.
I think maybe what we should do is maybe have the Wastewater Management Committee then begin to advocate for both because they can do that. We can't. We can't go out and advocate for them, but they can. If you recall what they did on the ballot for the wastewater, what was it? The largest positive vote we ever had in a ballot question ever on the wastewater? I mean, it was huge. They had signs all over town. So maybe we could get them to do a little, ask them if they're interested in doing some fundraising and making more signs for the ballot question.
For both.
For both. Well, it's something to think about.
We can advocate. We just can't spend the money for it.
Well, yeah, we, yeah, I mean, we can't go out.
The other thought too is that, just two words, garage doors.
I was going to say that. I didn't say it, all right? We all know what the weak sister was, okay?
Yeah.
But it took the whole.
Yeah.
The whole project out. Okay, so.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we place Articles nineteen through twenty-six on the warrant and that we separate Article twenty into two.
So that would actually be nineteen through twenty-seven, but we'll just.
The purpose of the motion, yes.
Okay. So the motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Close? Eyes have it. Last page, page three.
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify one item? I apologize for the interruption. We can just jump back to Article fourteen. There is a point of information that Heather's reminded me of, and I wanted to remind the board. I alluded to the fact that in the Marine and Environmental Services merger, there's some positions that this board still needs to officially vote to affirm. You would still need to do that, and we would anticipate bringing that to you with the help of the Personnel Director at your next regular meeting. In other words, to officially create these positions.
Right, would create the position.
You need to have them on the warrant in order for this to even have an opportunity to move forward.
And Selectman Braga made a phone call to me, and one of the positions, we did not fund, but that does not mean we cannot create that position, okay?
Right. It would be created but not funded. With your concurrence, obviously, critical.
And we'll look at the schedule next week, but that doesn't necessarily have to be next week. It has to be before town meeting.
Yes.
Okay. So we're on page thirteen then?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we add Articles twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine to the warrant.
Second.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty.
Right. Yeah, that's fair.
With the renumbering, of course, yes.
Motion and, do I have a second? Did you second it?
Second.
Okay, second. Any further discussion for the board without all those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
It has been the board's practice in years, in recent years, that we place petitioner's articles in the middle of the warrant as opposed to the end. And Articles twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight, as they appear before us, are petitioner's articles. I would like to move that we move those to become Articles fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, and that we move the other articles accordingly.
I'd just make just one suggestion. This board is going to sit down on Wednesday evening of this week and come up with an article for the special town meeting warrant. And that article will be put forward. I would hope that Article twenty-eight would come after that article. So by moving Article twenty-eight up to fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, you may take that up before the special town meeting. So that's why I'm asking that that article specifically be at the end of the regular town meeting or in the past when we might think that the special town meeting would be, specifically that one article.
Actually, that can be managed the way it, it's, we've previously had that issue, Mr. Chairman, if you may recall. And the town manager actually had town meeting table the article in question so that the article on the special would be addressed before the article on the actual town meeting was addressed. And I think I would be inclined to leave it to the moderator with, he would obviously understand the situation. But I don't want to make it a practice of singling out any specific petitioner's articles and saying, we're going to put some here and some there. I'd really like the board to stick to its practice of putting the petitioner's articles in the middle of the warrant so they receive attention appropriate as opposed to being dragged to the end of the evenings.
I'm actually much more comfortable with petitioner's articles being where they are. I know it's been a practice of the board in the past. I was not on the board at the time, and I'm not sure if it's a policy we voted on. I think it gives them special attention. I'm not sure. And I just think let them fall where they do, and I'm okay with that.
I will say that, one thing I will say, putting all the petitioner's articles together, no matter where they are, it doesn't serve anyone the best, I mean, best, spreading them out, I can understand. Putting one at, you know, Article four and one at Article seventeen, but putting all the petitioner's articles in one, one little spot, I don't think gives anyone better.
And what I would prefer is if they were clumped by topic. And if we were doing zoning articles and we had a petitioner article that was zoning, putting them together so we're sort of talking the same ideas, then I would feel that that made more sense.
That, that's a very good point. Never thought of that. Because we do have a one petitioner's article. I don't know which, the one on.
Secretary.
On, on the County Road is a petitioner's article. The one you brought to my attention, I believe that's a petitioner's article.
Oh, it is, yeah. And that's further up in the warrant.
So that, that's right. That is, that's correct. That's.
That's, Ten County Road.
Right.
It's like, where is that?
So that is in fact in the.
A petitioner's article.
Go ahead.
I just note that moving them to the place Selectman Potdom recommends interrupts the budgetary process. Some of the articles that are, would be pushed down really relate to the operational budget. Fifteen's capital improvement stabilization, general stabilization, OPEV, workers' compensation trust fund, the operating budget, and then the two large matters that you just discussed. So I would recommend that you place them after the new Article twenty-one. And so then prior to road takings and that's, those items, you would then have the petitioner's articles. I think it just disrupts the budgetary presentation and the budget issue. Rather than to Article fifteen, you'd move them to Article twenty-two.
And Article eight is the, is the other petitioner article that relates to that. And that follows like the planning board.
I'm fine with that, with Heather's recommendation.
Mr. Chairman?
So did you ever make a motion here?
I did make that motion, and I wouldn't mind changing it, but rather than, if we make them, if we make the change as suggested by Ms. Harper, we might as well just leave them where they are. I would actually be inclined to move them a little further up if that's the case. It looks like there's a reasonable break between Articles eleven and twelve, where eleven discusses the provisions of Section thirty-two of Chapter one thirty-three of the General Laws and Inspections. And Article twelve talks about sums of money. That may be a reasonable break if we're going to discuss that. But I'd also like to just, and Mr. Jones noted, he wasn't on the board when we started this practice, but just as some background, the reason why we started doing this is because in the past, and in fact, it was the town moderator who brought this to our attention, that the board tended not to make recommendations on petitioner's articles, and it had an unwritten policy to that effect. And the town moderator reminded me when I was chair at the time, actually, that we had to make a recommendation on every article that fell under our purview, which usually includes petitioner's articles unless they're of a zoning nature. And in addition to making the recommendations, of course, we, the board decided to give petitioners the respect I think that they're due in that previously, boards have sort of treated petitioner's articles like redheaded stepchovens, if you'll forgive the term, in that.
Oh, there's going to be some redheads. So would you?
But there was, there was often an attitude that because it was a petitioner's article, that it was somehow circumventing the democratic process when in fact, it's within our charter. The petitioners bring these articles to us following the process outlined in the charter. And there is certainly nothing wrong with them doing that. They are bringing to our attention things that they believe should be changed. The effort to move these to the middle of the warrant was simply one of several steps. The other step, of course, being that we actually now listen to the petitioners and give them the opportunity to ask the board for its support for their article, whereas in the past, the board did not hear that. And this board has heard articles that, in fact, quite honestly, there were some members of this board, myself included, that I didn't like to see the article on the warrant, but we gave them their due respect and the opportunity because they followed the processes outlined in our town government. I think leaving them at the end shows a little bit of disrespect because these articles are no more or less important than any other article on the warrant, simply because they are a petitioner's article. I don't think should be any reason why they're placed at the end. And as you alluded to earlier, Mr. Murphy, every night is different. And it could be that the petitioner's article ends up being heard at the end of an evening anyway, just because of the way the schedule and the events turn out. But at least this way, by moving the articles to the middle of the warrant, where showing the petitioner some respect as opposed to saying that their opinion and the efforts that they've put into this don't matter. So my motion is on the floor, Mr. Chairman, and I'll amend it to change those numbers to twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. If someone wants to second it.
Was it four article? Was it four?
There are four articles.
Okay, so there's a motion.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? We'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
What do we have? Doug, did you vote for that? Yes, yeah. Okay, so the motion carries. All right. So we'll just move the rest of the things around, and then we would have to make a judgment as a board on whether we would ask to table or not any, any particular item. So with that in mind, I'm still looking for.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we execute the warrant.
Okay, thank you very much.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Eyes have it. Okay. Doug, can you pass that license down here so we can? Did they approve the minutes? Did it? We've done, we've done everything. I just wanted to make folks aware that this board will be meeting on Wednesday of this week at six thirty PM here.
Five thirty.
Five thirty PM, I'm sorry. Five thirty PM here in this room. And again, to let everybody know that the written public comment is in fact done and that the Board of Selectmen has been sent, a vast majority of those have been scanned to read. All of the written public comments are also in a notebook in the selectman's office. If any member of the board would like to go back through that hard copy of those written documents, I would suggest that they do so. I know that there were quite a few that I received over the weekend. It was a lot of reading and it was very insightful. The board, again, on Wednesday will be meeting at five thirty. We will be discussing how we, the board intends on framing an article for town meeting. Just so folks out there realize, the public comment is over. We will not be taking comments from those in the audience. This will be a board discussion. Again, it's an open public meeting, and you're welcome to watch the board deliberate and come up with how we plan on moving forward for a warrant article that would be before this board next Monday evening for the special town meeting.
So would we discuss and vote possibly?
Well, we would discuss and vote the article that we would put forward. If we can come up to that conclusion. If not, if necessary for us to have another meeting, we would try to do so, or we could also allot some time on Monday evening. But again, we're meeting at five thirty. Come prepared if you have a case that you'd like to present. And I've asked the town manager to make sure that they have the assets available to be able to provide us information, meaning dollars and cents scenarios. Keep in mind, anything that we put on the town meeting warrant, we will have time to get that recommendation. In other words, adjust the dollar amounts between when it's put on and when, when actually we vote the recommendations, which I believe is March the eighth, I believe, or.
Number special, March eleventh?
March the eleventh. So we will have some. March the 11th, so we will have some time, and if we need to contact folks in the state, we'll also have that period of time during that, that timeframe there as well. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I make a comment, if I may, I want to thank you and members of the board for your very thoughtful and insightful and constructive, and instructive comments to me as part of my annual evaluation, I appreciate it very much, and I welcome the opportunity to meet you individually with members of the board in whatever manner you might care to do, and again, I want to thank you for, for that process, it is critical to me to be effective in my work on your behalf as town manager, and I do take it very seriously, and I appreciate the time and dedication and thoughtfulness that each of you has put into it, and thank you for the vote of confidence going forward, I very much appreciate the opportunity to be your town manager and to work on your behalf, and I look forward to that continuing, so thank you very much for that process.
You're welcome.
I, I must say that you handle yourself in a very professional manner as we've moved forward in this past year, and I look forward to working with you in the future, because I think, together with all, all of us working together in a community that we have, we can accomplish great things in Falmouth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, look for a motion or adjournment?
So, move.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes opposed? Geez, so much for a short meeting, huh?